We are on, ladies and gentlemen. This is the zoning Board of Appeals meeting of May 7th, 2013. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 40A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Since the minutes, uh, once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. And Patty, you want to get started with finance report, please?
Hi, Nancy. All I had time to give you was revolving because I've been kind of busy. But the only other thing we have besides that is the postage meter. And the phone bills, we have five months left for phone bills to come in. And we have about 160 and change left for that. So, once the June bill comes in, I might have to take that out of revolving and cumbersome funds because if we go over, we're in trouble. So, next year when we reallocate the 860 in expenses, we might just switch it around. But we still made more than we, we, um, took in, more than we-
Still in the black.
Good.
Um, new business, you have your business minutes I didn't attach. You guys, I emailed that to you guys, but I attached Noonan's for you. In case you needed that tonight.
Yep.
And then the reappointments, that's just a list of when you guys' terms are up. Let me know when you, when you want me to-
Yeah, I'm, uh-
Okay.
Just let me get past the minutes here for a minute.
Oh, we need-
We need to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the business minutes of 4/9/2013.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, oh, aye. Those opposed? No one. Okay.
Do we approve Noonan's minutes yet or no?
You said the minutes-
That was just part of it.
So, they would, you did, you did both and you said the minutes.
Okay, alright.
Yep.
Okay.
Terms, terms.
The appointments, Jeff and Dave just, um, are re-upping. So, Paul, you're up next year.
Locked in.
Oh, you only do it for a year?
Locked and loaded.
No, it's-
What, what month is this? Whenever we want in 2013 for Dave and-
No, their terms expire whether they're the five-year or the one, or the associates are one-year. So, the five-year, your five-year term is up June 30, 2014, next year.
2019 after we renew.
So, they all expire June 30.
In case anyone's counting. Thank you, Tim.
Is it, is it coincidence they're all in June?
It's always, it's a fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
So, it goes, fiscal year is July 1 to June 30.
Gotcha.
So, you can just go by those appointment letters?
Um, just give Paul some time. We might have, we might have a new member coming on board, possibly.
In September, I think, associate.
Okay.
Okay, correspondence.
2016.
Let's see, you have one. You have, um, correspondence from building, one that has a decision attached-
To get comfortable.
Get comfortable.
Just a minute, Patty. Correspondence? What is this? A violate, okay, yep, yep, I'm aware of that one.
That was a violation notice from John.
144, yep.
The second one is for next month, June 4 hearing. It's a modification of variance condition.
Yep.
John will be attending that hearing.
Okay.
And there's a decision for that hearing attached to it.
Attached to it, yep.
And then, this was correspondence-
Ah, here we go. Dana DeLorenzo.
To, um-
We're at, um-
And they're going to planning for this.
Before us or af- after us?
No, they're just going to planning for this.
They're going to planning, we're not in them.
Well, it says required to receive a special permit from the plan, oh, from the planning board, I'm sorry, yep.
The other new correspondence, I have three notice of intents. And I have whole copies here if you, if you need to look at them. But I just gave you a copy just to put in the agenda. This one's falling. Um, I took a look at the plan. They're doing an addition deck patio and ground pool. It's an RV and it meets all the setbacks.
Yep.
The next one is the Penbrook School. They're going before conservation. This is the NOI, this is the whole notice of intent for that. They've already met with them, I believe, and they're having another one. First hearing was 4/25/13, so that's here if anybody wants to look at it. Then, six and arena way, and they're just following up with the special permit we gave them with conservation because they have some wet ones in the back there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Old business, the zoning application. I was gonna work with, Jeff was gonna work with me on that, but we've both been straight out, so I don't know if you want to, I have, I do have a question if you want to take a look at it though.
Sure.
It already looks better, Patty.
Yeah. I revised. On the second page, and I put a little sticky note there for you, um-
What sticky notes? About mortgage survey?
Only because of the drawings, the, the, and other towns do this. Because of the drawings, we're getting like, a drawing on a piece of paper with, you know, um, it says mortgage survey plans are not acceptable because they get a mortgage survey plan. They draw a little square, they draw an arrow, and they're measuring it themselves. How do, do they know where the lot line is? So, a lot of towns, in researching this, I find, said, no, we want a certified plot plan, not a mortgage plan.
I think it's worth asking John if he has a guideline of what he's willing to accept for building permits as well.
Well, he requires a certified plot plan.
For anything that you do. Is that right? Anything that would extend the boundary probably of your existing home.
I would think anything that extends are always the, yeah, because of setbacks and everything.
I think if he's got-
I can't think of a situation where we would not want one. I'm just wondering, want, where we would not want a plot plan.
If he's got a mortgage, if he's got a mortgage plot plan that shows, you got 100 feet on either side, and somebody wants to bump out eight feet, I think he's gonna be reasonably comfortable with that.
But those mortgage plans generally don't put any dimensions on anything. They just cite the-
They're to scale.
Right.
Most of them are to scale. And if it's to scale, he can basically tell, you know, from that. But again, if it's right on the edge, if it's, if it's really tight, obviously, you can't go by that.
So, if he's sending anybody to us, they're obviously infringing upon that. We're gonna know exactly where they are. So, that's why I'm saying, I don't, I think we were saying, we, the same thing, that I don't, I don't underst-, I don't, I can't think of a situation in which somebody would come before us where we would not need a certified plot plan.
Right, yes.
Unless it's maybe a use where there's no dimensional stuff involved, maybe, I don't know.
Unless it's something like the, the next one, which is a modification of a previous decision-
Right.
Condition, which was a really restrictive-
And that has a, a, a plot plan with it already, correct? Or does it-
Well, it was a previous decision.
Yes, they had a whole, they had a whole set of plans already drawn up because they thought they were well set. So-
I'm just thinking maybe for uses-
Must have been that beer with dinner.
If it's a simple request for accessory apartment or something where you, well, you're still gonna want to see that.
If it's an accessory apartment that's in addition attached to the house, you want one. If it's an accessory apartment in the basement, like one Harmony Lane-
Yeah, but you're still gonna want to see parking and everything else.
Well, you still need the setbacks.
Yeah.
I think you need it. Because if it comes to us, like you said, like Dave said, if John doesn't think he needs it because it's not, if he-
Right. If John's got a comfort level with it, that's not coming to us.
And if it's coming to us, then we, we have to have it, I think.
I think I asked him about it. And he said it's up to you guys. Do you think you want to leave that? I mean, we can ask him when he gets here.
Who's that, John?
Yeah. Because I did ask him about it, and he said that's totally up to you sometimes.
Well, you and I are gonna look at this a little further.
Yeah.
I haven't had a chance to review the whole thing, so-
And then the other-
And, and anybody else who has comments, obviously.
The other question where I put a question mark was accessory apartment on page two of that. You know, look, if that, that was just-
Yep.
No, I did this in, an extra couple minutes I had. Um, and then on the last page where we have the D schedule, I put a little sticky on that with a question mark. We don't have floodplain listed, which I thought was interesting.
We have another, we don't have another listed either, do we? Any other application not listed or something?
No, because we have a grievous decision of the building inspector, which is an appeal. Um, no, we don't. It's strange. So, because a floodplain application is really involved. I mean, you need engineering, you, you may need to hire consultants, and usually, they don't happen in just one night. So, it's revolving hours you're using. So, it's something to think about.
I don't recall doing one. Have we done one?
Not since you guys have been here. We had one back in, it's been a while. Although Park and Rec is supposed to file a floodplain application with us, but, um, I haven't seen anything.
Somebody was asking me what's involved, and I said I had, I had not been through one, so it smelled out in the bylaws.
It's in the, when you look at the rules of procedure under, under floodplain, it tells you what it requires.
Right.
And maybe we should add that on here. That, that's another idea. And then-
Water resource in here?
I thought we should do the same for water resource, because water resource doesn't list, now, we have the bullet points of what we require, the plot plan and all that. It's not on there. So, I kind of, just to make it consistent, you can see the original, the one we have now is for us. And then, the proposed revised is the second. And I just made it look like, I just made it to look consistent. And I have the question of the mortgage survey plan and all that. And then it has all the engineering questions, hazardous materials. Just to keep them looking. Because it doesn't say you need a copy of the deed, you need this, you need that. It just never did. It's been like that for, I think, the, when was that amended last? I mean, the last time we amended, phew, it's been a long time ago. I'm going back to maybe 2002.
Enforcement.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
How did they find about 144 East Main?
Um, John got a complaint from the people living there.
Oh, right. They complained about rats.
Oops. Something like that.
Oh, somebody that was actually in the apartment?
They live in there and they complained about rats.
They complained about rats to the building inspector? Why wouldn't they complain to their-
Board of Health. I think they went to the Board of Health first, but they got rats and-
So, probably the people that are renting it weren't responsive?
I think the people that were renting it-
They're the ones that complained.
No, I know, but why wouldn't they have complained to their landlord first?
I don't know, I don't know what happened.
That's, that's what I'm saying. Were they not responsive, probably?
Yeah.
Ding dong.
This, um-
He's still, he's actually gonna file a building application with the building inspector for a multifamily.
For what?
Multifamily.
Yeah, right. I saw that too, yep.
So-
He's, um, wants to make it a multifamily now, then.
Does that allow it in, in that district with a special permit?
With a special permit, but it's a detached, usually a multifamily's in one-
There's two buildings on a lot there.
Yeah. You need a permit to get that in the first place, don't you?
Yeah, I don't know the history.
Right now, he's gotta get a certified plot plan and application to John before, no denial's been written yet or anything.
Yep. It looks like this accessory apartment stuff is sort of being worked out between John and Jay in the assessor's office, and they're gonna sort of communicate.
Actually, the, the email that, from, that I sent to Mike, okay, you see his response there?
Yep, yep.
And then, he copied Jay, so-
Oh, my.
I had a little meeting with Jay and he can give us, basically, he goes out and looks at a property, okay? And he records on the field card you see, the field card that has all the information when it was built and all that. And if he sees an apartment, he'll put it in the notes section of the field card. But he's not required to let John know or anything.
Not required, no.
So, just because something's on a field card doesn't necessarily mean it has a permit. So, when I'm looking at field cards, I'm like, well-
Well, if, if he checks that box, he could certainly leave you a copy of the field card.
Notes. But he said he would be happy-
Or would think.
-to let John know when he goes out.
Yeah, he could just copy it, make a copy of it for him or something.
Right.
Or you, or whatever.
But John's now, needs to research a little bit, and I wrote it on the top of Mike's email, um, what he can do with that information now. Can he, because it's coming from the assessor's office, can he now go out? Can he write in a letter? What can he do? So, he's looking into that and he'll let us know.
Well, you're talking potentially about two different things. One is, you've got an apartment that nobody knows about, number one. Or you've got an apartment that, we granted, that's not being used in the way it was intended to be occupied. You know, and there could be a couple different situations. So, say, yes, there's an accessory apartment here, there's an apartment attached. Yes, that's right, they are. But who's to say that, that's a relative living there and all those conditions are being met the way that the special permit dictates that they're supposed to be being met, so.
Jay was nice enough to give, he printed every field card he has that has an apartment. There weren't as many as I thought. There weren't as many as I thought. There's 49 that he knows about.
49 what? Cards of what?
Accessory apartments.
Uh-huh.
Um- That's quite a lot.
And there's some on here that I know have them that are highlighted. So, it's, it's, for example, back in 2007, I wasn't here when I left a little bit. Um, when building inspector writes a denial, copy goes to the assessor's office. Copy doesn't go to the assessor's office, they don't have it. So, like, there's some on here that don't have it.
Oh, yeah.
But I know they have it because I have it, it's in my computer, I have the cards.
Yeah, yep.
But, um, the accessory apartment list that I had going, I emailed it to Jeff, and I said, can you open this?
Oh, yeah, I couldn't open it.
Won't open.
Yeah, I couldn't do it.
So, IT's working on it, because that's my list, so.
Oh, it's old or something.
But Jay's, Jay's fine with, you know, um, letting John know, but John's just gonna look into what he can do with that information.
What do you find out?
What do you find out, John?
Oh! I don't think he's done that yet.
No, I-
Yeah, um, if I'm informed, I can, uh, I can act. It doesn't have to be a written complaint. If the assessor says this is a situation, I can go ahead and act as hard as, send a letter, say, explain to them what the restrictions are with this special permit that they, because the property has been granted. The, I think the situation of the, what we need to do to close the loop is, um, when a deed transfer occurs, somehow have a, a way that I'm informed, you know, either through the assessor or, I'm not sure, any other mechanism, so that I can send out that type of, uh, a, uh, informative, informative letter.
Yep.
You know, let them know that, that situation, uh, or the, the conditions of that special permit.
Right.
Unless we do as some towns do, which is put it in the deed restriction-
You have to have a restriction on it if you want-
Yeah, there, apparently, there are some towns that that's part of, and then it doesn't become a burden of-
Is that something we apply to that, that deed restriction? We apply that when they get their permit?
You have to tell-
Change where I law.
You have to change, yeah. Well, yeah, I guess we probably-
Yeah, because, for example, if you look at Danvers, um-
Did we have that from last one?
And ju-, just like the town of Comfort, they changed the bylaw. They put more, um, conditions on, they like detached structures and stuff. And then they have, it's called a use restriction under, they call it extended family living area instead of accessory apartment or in-law, EFLA. So, they changed the bylaw, and they put these restrictions on, these conditions, and then they put use restriction procedure. It's, it's similar to Chelmsford. And when I emailed the building inspector in Danvers, I mentioned Chelmsford does something similar, and I guess the guy in Chelmsford used to be in Danvers, so-
Oh, yeah. Driving the, uh-
And I didn't even know it, so.
Criteria.
And he lives in Georgetown.
But you'd, it'd have to go to town meeting. We, we'd have to have meetings with the planning board. The planning board would have to hold a hearing on any bylaw change. And then, um, just a public hearing as a matter of procedure. And then, um, it'd have to go through town meeting.
It would be nice if it didn't have to be quite so-
Because it hasn't been changed since 95.
It's kind of a brute force approach to keeping track of who's got what permits. I, I was suggesting, John, last month, that maybe there's a way we could have the owners that have these permits submit an affidavit on an annual or semi, you know, every other year or something like that, saying, you know, or if the form says, yes, I interest, you know, these are the requirements, and yes, I'm abiding by them, and I'm aware of this, and so, fine, you know.
I lived in Borrocker, and last year, uh, I did an in-law apartment for my father before he passed. And, uh, that is one of the conditions of that special permit, is that we inform the zoning Board of Appeals on an annual basis, uh, who is living in the, you know, that this is a status, my father is still living there, or it is vacant. There is no option that I am, you know, renting it for profit or anything, yeah.
I mean, you know, it's, it's an honor system, but at least nobody can say that I didn't know about it, I wasn't aware, I bought the house and it was, you know-
Right. Is there a mechanism in place now where the property's, um, you know, someone's buying that piece of property and thinking, oh, we don't have to do anything, it's an in-law or, you know, maybe bend the rules or-
Mean on the sale?
What is the mechanism to say when it's changing hands? But the bank's not telling us.
And that's why the deed restriction has, I realize it's very heavy, but-
That's from, that's from, we can apply a deed restriction starting now.
Therefore.
Therefore, right. Well, that's a good place to start, I would imagine. And then, if somebody's got free time, we can start via mail contacting people that already have accessory apartments. Um, they're going to be, I think, as people are granted special permits, now, we're much more specific about this. You cannot do anything else with this but allow relative to be there. I think over the years, I think that's been a little less specific, so.
May I ask, um-
That's a bylaw change, though.
This is okay to ask? So, it sounds like your dad's asked.
Oh, deed restriction, yeah, probably would be true.
So, did, did you, like, what, like, what happens then? Used to go back to the zoning board and-
Uh, it can be occupied by another, yeah, by another family member, but it's even that, um, I'd have to go back to the zoning Board of Appeals and say, this is my mother-in-law, father-in-law, and they want to move in.
So, are you prompted? Is someone prompting you? You, you're, it's your annual time to tell us who's living there or?
Uh, the annual portion is a condition of the special permit.
So, it's up to you to remember to do it?
It's up to the owner, yeah.
I guess I'm just thinking of business process flow and where, where it could, you know, like, that, sounds like that might work, but it's still not a lot further than we are today.
I, I did have the conversation with the secretary of the zoning Board of Appeals in Borrocker, and asked how many, she said, there's, uh, maybe hundreds that they have out there, there's a handful that do every year, but the majority don't.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Well, let's, um, close this, yeah, well, let's keep spinning that plate, and let's close this meeting minute, uh, this, this meeting, this business meeting.
Hold on, let me just pass out the last thing on the agenda. That's for next month.
So, we can get started on our first hearing.
18 Thurlow Street, so that's for June 4. And that's- So, we're gonna continue, um, the application and the accessory for next business agenda?
Yeah, let's just kind of, yeah, if, if anything comes up, or if someone has an ingenious way to move this forward, we'll, we'll deal with it. I, this doesn't, I mean, there's no rush. This has been going on for years, so.
Yeah.
But between you and John and, and Jeff, not your chairman, and I'll help, uh, we'll figure something out. I, the last thing I wanted to do was start tracking people down.
You run with it.
You know, that's just not gonna work. Um, it, it can, but it's gotta be a complaint, really, is what we're waiting for, for starters, so. Motion to close the business meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, aye. Those opposed? No. It's unanimous. Okay.
Do you have a legal note? Has he got it?
I do have a, you want one?
No, I'm just wondering if you need it, Rick.
I'll have it.
I do.
If anybody's here for the first hearing, 36 Prospect, if you could just sign in. Frank, please, if you can.
I want you to read this. I'll open the meeting, hearing, and then you read that, yep.
Sure.
Read that for one second, yeah? Okay. Okay, so the business meeting is now closed. We're going to open the, uh, the hearing for an application for 36 Prospect Street. Uh, the Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 40A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. The members of this zoning Board of Appeals Board are Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, Jeff Moore, Dave Kapnis, and I am Paul Schillen, Chairman. Jeff is going to read the application, well, the advertisement for it.
Yeah, legal notice from the Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals regarding 36 Prospect Street. An application has been made by Thomas and Lisa Simmons of 36 Prospect Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts, for a special permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapters 165, Sections 9, 74, and 79. Owner applicants are requesting to convert single-family dwelling to multi, two-family dwelling. The premises affected is 36 Prospect, Prospect Street, Georgetown, Mass., in the RA District, identified in the assessor's map, 11A Lot 6. The application will be heard by the zoning Board of Appeals at the Georgetown Hall, 3rd Floor, May 7, 2013. It's in the Georgetown Record on 4/4 and 4/11, 2013.
Thank you, sir. Uh, yes, applicants, come on up and introduce yourselves and let us know, give us a, give us your feelings on this.
Good evening. My name is Martin Arsenal. I represent Thomas and Lisa Simmons on the application that's before the board tonight. Um, as the legal notice stated, this is an application for conversion of a single-family As the legal notice stated, this is an application for conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling under the local bylaw. It's required, it's in an R.A. district and a special permit, it's required in that district. As a preliminary matter, I think it's worth covering the background history of this case because it has somewhat of a tortured history at this point. Thomas and Lisa Simmons have lived in the house since nineteen ninety-nine, they're not new to the town. They have two school-aged children in the Georgetown public school system, they have one adult child who also lives with them at the house. In two thousand nine, am I correct?
Yes.
They hired a contractor to install isocyanurate insulation in the existing dwelling on the premises. Because of the negligence of the installer and/or the manufacturer, the isocyanurate gas out, the insulation outgassed and made the house uninhabitable. Around that same time, they had applied for a building permit to raise an existing barn on the property, and there's a picture of the barn that was raised in the packet that I provided to you, and construct a more modern garage. Because of the timing of all of this, they approached Mr. Caldwell, who was then the building inspector, and discussed with him the possibility of converting that, that garage structure they were going to build into an addition on the house to allow them to house their family, because they were homeless essentially at that point, they were living from hotel to hotel because they couldn't occupy the house. They desired to keep their kids in the Georgetown schools, they have relationships in Georgetown. Because of a miscommunication, that building permit was never amended to reflect the change in the structure. Around that same time, in December of that year, they came before this board on a special permit to have a multifamily dwelling on the premises. That permit was withdrawn because it was unclear what was going to happen with the older portion of the house, okay? They've now determined after extensive testing on the property that it may be possible to remediate the existing dwelling on the premises. So, they're coming before the board tonight to request a special permit to be able to use the existing dwelling as a rental property.
The dwelling that they're in currently?
They're, they're living in the addition to the house currently.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
The, I've submitted a plan to the, to the board, the, the proposed special permit complies with zoning. Your zoning bylaws requires at least ten thousand square feet per unit, the, the square footage of the lot is twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-nine square feet. This is the, this is the, the addition that was built on the house, this is the existing dwelling, okay? All of the setbacks are met, okay? We have sufficient off-street parking shown on the plan, your bylaw requires two parking spaces, we're throwing, showing three off-street parking spaces. We have a design for a septic system for nine bedrooms that's been approved by the Board of Health, and there's a copy of the approval letter from the Board of Health in your packet. So, essentially, what we're asking the board to do is allow them to remediate and make use of the existing property in such a way that they can minimize their economic loss that they suffered as a result of this tragedy with the insulation being installed. Under your zoning bylaw, you're required to make certain findings, and in, in the memorandum that I've submitted to you, I obviously lay out that the lot does comply with zoning. They will comply with all other environmental standards, Tom can speak to what they intend to do to remediate the property. As it is now, the property is vacant, and as a vacant property, I think it creates a public health danger as well as it's an eyesore. He's continued to pay the taxes on the property. The, the requested use would be desirable to the public interest in that it will provide another rental unit in that in-town district. I'm assuming you're all familiar with the Prospect Street area? So, it's a densely settled area, there are at least six other multifamily dwellings in the neighborhood, there's nearby commercial buildings, as you're aware, there's the, the auto repair place as well as the oil company. So, therefore, I don't think it will impair the integrity of the neighborhood in any way to allow this use of the property. In addition, I don't think it will cause an overloading of that use in the property as well. As an in-town district, multifamily uses are sort of a, an accepted use, certainly in that neighborhood, and in a town district, I think that's the case. In conclusion, I believe that the, the applicants have made out a strong case that, that they should be entitled to a special permit on the property, and I just want to stress the fact that they've been put in this position by circumstances that were not of their making. They did make a conscious choice to put the addition on the house, I'll grant you that, and that was done as, as an emergency measure to provide someplace for the family to live. As of right, they could have put a trailer on the property while they were resolving all of this, but they prefer to try and do a more permanent addition.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? We're, I'm then going to read through some correspondence that pertain to this hearing and then we're going to just keep going after that, so if there's anything else you want to add to it, you can do it now or?
He pretty, Martin pretty much summed it up, short and sweet.
Yep.
Uh, I just, we ask for your wisdom and guidance and making sure that we get our special permit.
Okay.
One more thing I'd like to point out to you is we have attached to the materials a petition that he brought around to the, to the neighbors, and the bulk of the neighbors in the neighborhood did support it. I think we have thirty, thirty or so signatures on that of abiding property owners, so we're not opposed to that use.
Okay, thank you. We're going to read some correspondence, who's, who, there's one here that's.
Paul.
Yes.
I left one out of your packet, this is from the Board of Health, sorry.
Okay.
I missed that one.
Who's got some pipes on, this is going to be a long one, your mouth is going to get dry.
You should have four.
I have four, that's correct, I just, the, the.
One is the petition.
The third one being the last two names on the petition, correct?
Yeah, you don't have to read the whole thing.
Right. Okay. This first bit of correspondence is from Westler and Wasserman. Um, to the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals regarding Tom and Lisa Simmons, Thirty-Six Prospect Street, Georgetown. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, please be advised that this law, that this office represents Tom and Lisa Simmons in their ongoing lawsuit stemming from the misapplication of foam insulation in, at their home at Thirty-Six Prospect Street. The name of the case is Simmons versus Raymond et al., Essex Superior Court, number two-zero-one-two-dash-CV-dash-zero-zero-two-six-nine. I am writing in support of my client's petition for a special permit to repair and occupy a two-family residence. This approval will allow my clients to move forward in their case and will help to fulfill my client's duty to mitigate their damages in the above captioned matter. Truly yours, Stephen Wasserman. Somebody got that other piece of correspondence?
From Betsy Amso.
Yes, yep.
All you got? Um, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, dear board members, oh, dated May sixth, two thousand thirteen, from Betsy Amso. I own the property. Oh, yeah, sorry. I own the property at Thirty-Seven Prospect Street, where I've lived for over twelve years and I've always had a very cordial relationship with Lisa and Tom Simmons.
Yes, thanks.
However, as the only abutter with a direct view of Thirty-Six Prospect Street, I would like to express my concerns about the proposed rezoning of their home as a multifamily dwelling. The appearance of the Simmons property has changed significantly since I purchased my home in two thousand, most notably the large addition constructed in two thousand ten completely altered the view from my house. Photo A shows how the property looked when I moved in, and photo B shows how it looks now. When I signed the petition to build this addition, it was my understanding that it would be much smaller. Photo C provides a sense of how the property now looks as a whole. The areas used for parking have also progressively enlarged in recent years, as shown in photo D, in addition to the broad driveway leading to the garage, a wide strip of yard running the width of the property is now being used for additional parking. Photo E shows that yet another driveway has been added at the right of, at the right of the property. I've been told by the homeowners that they intend to expand the parking areas even further to accommodate the tenants who are to occupy the front section of the home by dramatically altering the landscaping at the front of the property. From my side of the street, their yard already has an increasingly commercial appearance. Frankly, if the Simmons home had been as large it is now, or had been a multifamily to begin with, I would not have purchased my house. I fully respect the rights of homeowners to do what they wish on their property, and I like the Simmons family and wish them well. Nonetheless, I am concerned about my property values and quality of life. I wonder if our small, heavily-traveled street is already filled to capacity. In addition, if the original part of the structure is toxic, as I've been told, what kind of assurance will there be that is safe for tenants? If Georgetown were to issue an occupancy permit and there are related problems down the road, wouldn't the town parentheses and taxpayers be liable? I respectfully request that the Zoning Board of Appeals take my concerns into consideration when making a determination on this matter. I would be interested in learning if there's a way to address these issues and, oh, my bad pronunciation, Alay my concerns? A-l-a-ay. The photos are apart, go.
She has, she said she was bringing color photos.
Thank you. Thank you. Another piece of correspondence is first from Patty to Deb Rogers. Hi, Deb, did Board of Health lift the deed restriction on Thirty-Six Prospect? Thanks, Patty. It was approved to remove the deed restriction in order for the homeowners, homeowner to refinance and install the approved septic system, which he has not done. Therefore, at this time, the deed restriction is still in place. And finally, the, there are two new addition, uh, two new, uh, two more people have signed this, this, what's the proper term for this? What is this?
Petition?
Petition, thank you. And I can't read them. Sharon, somebody, and not sure even of the other one, Thirty-One Prospect Street in Georgetown and four-thirty Andover Street, Georgetown.
That's not me. I'm not Sharon.
Right. Not, no.
Can I just say something? I'm, I'm here with Betsy Amso on the, what she submitted, there, I have color photographs that were not with that package, so I'd like to submit them on her behalf. I know you have pictures, but they're colored.
Can I just get your name?
Audrey Parr, P-A-R-R, I signed in. I'm your best friend, I'm a lawyer, but I happen to be your best friend, so. She just, she has these, the same, it's the same submission she faxed in, but just with color photos and she brought copies of it as well, so.
Thank you.
And can I just get your address, please? Sure. Twenty-three Powderhouse Avenue, I'm from Haverhill.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What's the date, what's the date of this petition? It says that it was revived five-sixth thirteen, but what was the original date?
The original date is in the application.
Am I missing it?
I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, it's in the original one, which you might, may or may not have in front of you.
Yeah.
That's right. It's two thousand ten, more than likely, whenever that, we went through that.
That was withdrawn and then there was a new petition filed.
No, there's one in the application, not Exhibit H.
The current application?
Date on it.
There's no date on it, that's why, that's why I was asking. Do you know what date this was?
Oh, this, oh, the, this?
Exhibit H?
Yeah.
You've gathered these signatures contemporaneous with when he submitted the petition.
From two thousand nine on?
No, no, these, no, these were, these were when he was preparing the petition, he got, this petition, he gathered those signatures.
Okay, so, two thousand thirteen?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's.
These are all two thousand thirteen?
Yes, sir.
Exhibit H? Okay. Thank you. The way this hearing goes now, the, the audience has their time to come up to the podium. If anyone wants to add anything to this hearing, you may do so, you may, you direct any questions or comments to the board, and also identify who you are to Patty so she can write that down in the record. So, if there's anyone who wants to come forward, please do so.
Sure, again, I'm Audrey Parr, I'm just speaking back with Betsy Amso sitting back here, she's a little nervous, so, I figured I'd talk to her, and she said that would be okay. I'm a lawyer, but I'm not here as a lawyer. I will say that she moved into Georgetown because I've been living in Haverhill since nineteen, like, a long time, nineteen ninety-six, and I suggested it was a great place for her to move into because it's a beautiful, you know, quiet place. She looked for a place that was quiet and like a, a small, small street that was already established, it didn't have like possibility of development or all sorts of things. She found that Thirty-Seven Prospect Street, which is actually directly across the street from the Simmons' house, and I have to say, what she put in the letter is true. She's, she likes the Simmons', they get along really well, but it's not a personal thing, it's just an issue of quality of life and aesthetics. When she moved in, she moved into a place that, you know, if you look at the, the initial picture she showed, which was Exhibit A, it's a small little, a small little house with a little, small garage, and that's why she basically moved into that location. She had, she has a Thirty-Seven Prospect directly across the street, a really nice little house that she has basically played by the rules and made it beautiful, you know, with a wetland commission, I mean, a conservation commission, and the town, she's worked with them to, to do things correctly, in the right way. Right after she moved, or sure, no, I would say within, I think two thousand and ten was it, when she, for, when she moved in, that the initial application was made to change the, to change that garage and make the addition, which she understood was going to be a small little, like a, you know, an attachment to the little garage and make the little, small little thing above it, which was going to be a, an in-law apartment above that garage. If you look at those pictures, I mean, it's like a, if you look at the regular house and the, the attachment behind it, it's like a McMansion, it's like, like way higher than even the, the first house. So, that alone was a, I don't think it was exactly what certainly she expected, and I'm not sure it was actually what you guys expected when you allowed him to have a permit to do that. And so, but, you know, that's what happens, and then, you know, what are you going to do, because it's there, you can't change it, you can't tear it down, so you live with it. And then, my understanding is that a couple of years later, he then tried to apply for this multifamily unit thing already, and, and now we have the issue of the toxicity, which I understand is a bad issue, at least he's made some claims on whether, what's happening with those insurance claims, I don't know, but he's made claims that there's those issues about toxicity, so he's moved, from my understanding, from the front of the house into the back of the house, which was the in-law apartment, I don't know if any in-laws ever lived in that giant, you know, part of the, of the house, but now he's living back there and the front's been emptied. If you, if you provide a, I mean, I think there's two issues here, if you provide a, an occupancy permit or whatever it is that you guys, I'm not a lawyer for that, so I don't really understand the process in detail, but if you provide that and in fact there's issues about the toxicity of the property, then I think there might be issues about liability for the town and for the taxpayers here, assuming you could even get past that, we go back to the issue of aesthetics in this, in the town. And, and for her, I mean, it's, it's, I know, she's really the only abutter directly across the street from, from this house. I mean, the other houses are, are further down the street, she's directly across the street. If you look at the pictures, you'll see that her view is like right smack there, and you've gone from a small one-family house to now you've got dirt driven, you know, dirt, that's like you put two or three cars in front, then you have a driveway that you can put three cars side by side, and then past that, you then have like a, a small area, and then you'll see a, in some of the pictures, you'll see a driveway that's got some gravel in it and that looks like some commercial stuff behind it. So, the possibility of what can happen aesthetically, once you create a two-family house here, which really was essentially supposed to be an in-law apartment, you're talking about a much bigger structure, about, much bigger, you're talking about having, you know, potentially eight, nine, there's already four, five, six cars there at a time, you're talking about eight, nine cars, you're talking to a lot of people, and a little tiny street that's right by, behind the school. So, I think that she's just looking for your consideration as far as that's concerned and also because it is a variance, it's not a, it's not something that's absolute or that he's entitled to, it's a variance, which is you have to show specific reasons why it's an appropriate thing to have. And I suggest that right now with all of the things that are there, especially with the toxicity gas and show.
Yes, what'd you say?
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments with regards to this hearing?
Sure. My name's Denise Langley, I live at forty-one Prospect Street.
Langley?
Langley, L-A-N-G-E-L-A-N-G-E. I live diagonally across the street. When I bought my house eight years ago, I understood it was multifamily neighborhood. I personally don't object to what they've done. I think how they built it is attractive, they have a big swimming pool out there, they got a shed off to the right, which I know they drive down to that shed to unload things or load things. They planted plants in the front of the pool to make that more aesthetic. I personally don't have a problem.
Great, thank you very much. Is that it? Everyone's, oh, yeah, come on up.
Scott Mantel from Thirty-two Prospect Street, I live right next. Mantel, M-A-N-T-E-L. Live right next door to him. Thirty-two Prospect Street.
Thank you.
Want to say that I don't have any issues with it, I mean, the point that I want to make is the structure's there already, it's vacant, might as well let a family come in and take advantage of it. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Can I ask him a quick question? Can I ask you? Have you, have you had the opportunity to review the plan as submitted?
I have, no.
If you, if you'd like to. One of the things that I'm sure will come up is parking, and one of the things I noticed is that there's, we don't have to discuss this at the moment, but in fact, I'll even let you take a look at this. Being the closest of butter to what appears to be some parking lots going in there, I just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to review that, so, sorry.
No, no.
The next door?
He's, he's the butter on that side, and one of the questions that I'm sure will come up is.
Oh, right, Scott Mantel, okay.
I believe that's, that's your house just to the, to the left, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. You can, you can hang on to that if you want, we can discuss it later.
Is that it? Anyone else have any input? Okay, board, feelings, questions? We can go right around the loop, however you want to do it.
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused on the initial permitting process.
Me too.
It, I, there's a lot of correspondence here, okay, and I've spent several hours trying to, you know, sift through it and try and understand it more and more and more. It's my understanding that you had, originally there was a garage there.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And as best as I can tell, the permit was to demo that garage and rebuild it on its same footprint, and then found out during demo, the foundation was unsuitable. Correct. Okay. What were the original dimensions of that garage? John, if you have something to document that, I'd certainly appreciate your input.
I'm not a hundred percent sure of the exact dimension, sir, but it was definitely wider than what I have now. What I ended up doing was making it less wide and more deep into the backyard so that we could house my family. That was the main purpose of this whole thing.
It changed the footprint?
A little bit, yes.
But we, John, do you have any specifics on that?
The, the new structure is twenty-four by thirty.
Does that sound right?
Something like that, yeah.
Because, I mean, even looking at. Because, I mean, even looking at, you know.
Not including the deck.
Right, I'm looking at the plan here, and I got, you know, nineteen-eight by thirty-five-four, and one end, it's a little narrow in the back, so we're looking at approximately, this says nineteen-eight in the front, twenty-eight-four in the rear.
Because of the overlap.
Because of the overlap, yeah.
And then approximately thirty-five to thirty-six and changed deep.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound about right?
Run it through again?
Well, is it?
On the, you're reading off an ass bill right now?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight by thirty-six, approximately? Okay.
So, the original, the original structure, original footprint was twenty-four, I'm sorry. One full line, thirty deep. And the original permit for a garage was for those dimensions, twenty-four by thirty.
How did that happen?
Well, I went to the, the, back to the building inspector, after I found out I couldn't, after moving six and seven times, you know, I was living on Salisbury Beach at the time, and I went to the building inspector, and I showed him the plans for the new building, and he said, yeah, build it. That's pretty much what would happen there. And I did.
I, I was under the impression you got a permit to build a, a garage?
No, sir, that, that was the original one. I got a second, I came to the building inspector a second time, asked him, I asked for permission to build this.
I can, I think I can clarify what happened. He went to Mr. Caldwell at the time, and Mr. Caldwell gave him verbal permission to build what he intended to build, what he built on the property. The mistake that was made at that time was he should have gone back in and pulled a new permit, and didn't do so. And he subsequently did that with John's office in July, I think, after the structure was built. We cured that problem. I know.
Go on, I, I just.
I don't know if you cured it, cured is a kind of a funny word to be used.
I understand.
I thought that the building was under construction as a garage, then perhaps the, then perhaps this problem occurred with the original dwelling, and then they turned it into a dwelling that they could live in. This is all through ver, no.
No.
All right?
No, well, the, the.
Go ahead.
There was no construction whatsoever going on outside the house, until we, we had gone in front, I had pulled the permit to get ready to do the, to do the garage. I then went back to Mr. Caldwell.
John Caldwell.
Mr. Caldwell, and said, hey, we've been out of our house for, you know, whatever it was, six months, or whatever, told him what was going on, gave him plans of what I needed to do, in order to house my family, and when I, when he saw them, he said, go ahead and build it.
He didn't redirect you to the zoning board for a special permit at that time?
No, I was never redirect, I would have done it.
Why did you come before us for a special permit for a two-family?
Now?
No, two years ago.
In 2009.
What triggered that? If it wasn't the building inspector identifying that this was actually going to be two dwellings in the lot?
He was consulting with Charlie Brett, too, at that time, as a former building inspector in Georgetown, and I think Charlie recommended to you that you pull a permit, is that correct? Because Charlie Brett, Charlie Brett prepared the first application that came before the board. He helped him out with that.
But you came before the zoning board for a special permit for a two-family? Before.
Oh.
This is not the first time you've been here for this very thing?
You're talking, this is, that's correct.
The one that you withdrew?
Correct.
The one we withdrew, not before this.
Yes, the first one.
Which was triggered by, and I'd have to go back and pull the file, denial by the building inspector. Correct.
Ultimately.
Ultimately, or?
That's what he had, he needed to do in order, he needed, I needed a denial in order to come in before you, yes.
Right, I mean, at some point, he came to the realization that you were building a dwelling, not a room over a garage, and he said, you gotta go to the zoning board for that. I assume it's on one fashion or another. No, that never happened?
So, the house was, the premise was built before the, the new inspector came in. The house was already built. It had had plumbing inspections, gas inspections, building inspections, wiring inspections.
I understand that, I understand that. I mean, I interrupt you, but when we were here, a year or two, whenever it was.
That was.
John was, John Caldwell was the building inspector, and he sent you to us for a permit for a two-family, correct?
That, I think that's correct, yeah, yeah.
What I'm trying to understand is, he either said you could build it, and gave you a building permit for what you've got, or he gave you a denial, and said you need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a permit, which you did. It's like, I'm having trouble reconciling the, yes, he told me to go ahead and build it, versus you showed up here asking for a special permit when something was already built, so that's where.
I think we're confused by that, too, to be completely honest with you. This was, I mean, the point being, this was never hidden from the town. I mean, he was getting interim inspections, he pulled a, an application for a special permit before your board. So, I mean, any idea that this was somehow trying to pull a fast one, I don't think is correct.
Can I stop you for a minute? Do you have that permit card?
I don't have it with me, no.
Do we have a copy of that?
You guys have it.
John's got it.
I have a copy of this.
And does it have some?
In handwriting, it says.
A special permit until after the house was built.
amended on seven twenty-eight-ten to include living space.
Really?
Soon on.
I don't even remember that.
Better to read.
I don't remember that at all.
Do we have that original plan? So, what, what I'm trying to figure out is, I want to know what your, I want to see a plan of your original garage, and then I want to see your plan when it was changed to this, what you built. Do you have that, John?
Yeah, I have both of those plans, again, John. I, what's important, I think, is that the plans of the live, living habitable space were not in, in the file, were not in the building.
Okay.
In the application, at the time when I started, and I went out for the first inspection, my first inspection on the property. So, the, what was there, what was in the file at that time, what was printed clearly on the car was it was a garage.
Yeah. That's what I was, under the impression, that was what it was, and then, and then that triggered the request to it live in that, that they needed to, and the only reason we, it was grant, you were granted the ability to live in the new addition, was that the old part of the house was inhabitable at that time. So, you actually were just transferring living space from one to the other, but you were never considered, never was it granted, the con, the concept of a two-family hasn't even been really addressed yet, I don't think. Well, they withdrew. That's, they withdrew, that's right.
Just don't hit the mic with the plans, because.
If I can point out to you, the letter that was written by Mr. Caldwell, it's attached to your packet as Exhibit E, which is dated March eleventh, two thousand and ten.
Yep.
Which is contemporaneous with when he withdrew his, his first application to your board, in which he says he can issue an occupancy permit for the addition.
That's right.
Was that after it stated that after the litigation, everything was cleared up from the original dwelling?
So, this was the original?
No, he said, the way this was resolved is they said, we'll allow you to occupy the addition as a single-family dwelling, and defer the issue of whether or not you're able to obtain a special permit for a multifamily dwelling, until such time as you're clear how you're going to remediate the property.
Right.
Because, because at that point, you know, the, the scientific studies hadn't been done, just to address the issue of the occupancy permit on the dwelling. As you're aware, there's no residential air quality standards in Massachusetts. My client's intent, and if he does remediate the front building, is to do the remediation and bring in an expert again to test the air in the dwelling, and make sure it's safe, because obviously doesn't want to expose himself to liability by renting to somebody and having them claim that they got sick as a result of the conditions of the building.
Well, a couple of things on that. When's the last time the air was actually tested in the dwelling?
That was, uh, tested last August, sir, for the third time.
And do we have any documentation, results at those, with us today?
Not with us today, it is still uninhabitable, and I have it, I have a CPH that I was expecting a letter from today with recommend, yeah, recommendations of remediation of the building.
Going back to Exhibit E, as you brought up, attorney, when the issues are resolved with the primary dwelling, they may go before the Zoning Board of Appeals if they still desire to have a multifamily dwelling in the future. Are those issues resolved?
They will be once I can move forward, sir.
So, that answer would be no, correct, as of now?
I think I can address that. The problem that he has is he needs to refinance the property in order to be able to afford to do the remediation. It's, it's a bit of a catch-twenty-two for them. His litigation counsel is telling him that he has a legal duty to mitigate his damages. Is that, do you understand what that means? So, he has a duty to take steps to reduce his economic impact as a result of this event. So, his litigation attorney is suggesting to him that he has to take appropriate steps to try and remediate the building, and do something with it, right? Which is why he wrote that letter to the board, okay? In order to be able to remediate the building, he needs to go to a bank and get a loan, right? He can't get a loan from a bank, right, unless the property is approved for the use that he intends to make of it. So, it's, it's, I agree with you, it's a circular problem, but that's the position.
That doesn't have to be a two-family dwelling, that could just be a larger house.
I don't think it would, he wouldn't get financing.
I won't get the financing.
Right, so.
That's.
But I understand that that's not.
Financial hardship is not an argument for a special permit, but.
I understand, and I'm just trying to explain to you the background as to why.
Right now, you've got a nine-bedroom house of which, I mean, the circumstances are, right now, you have a very large house, half of which you can't occupy.
Correct, correct.
If, if a two-family is denied, and the place is cleaned up and made habitable, you still have one dwelling that you could live in. I just want to make sure we're clear on this.
Sure.
They could occupy the whole place with one kitchen, or whatever the rules are for.
Sure.
Is that correct, John, or am I?
Correct.
Am I misintu?
As part of this process, when, after seeing prior inspector Caldwell's letter, that he was going to allow this, and I, I need to agree with the Simmons, that it's obvious from the permit, and from the limited correspondence we have from the prior inspector, that he was aware of, that this is no longer a garage, and, but, no plans in the file, no, the application was never changed, none of that. So, as part of me going, moving forward, I required a deed restriction that said, this is, stated it clearly, this is a single-family residence, that it cannot be occupied as a two-family until such time that it goes before this board and a special permit is granted, and the septic issues were resolved, because now we have a nine-bedroom.
Exactly, you've got to upgrade the septic regardless.
The final point, the final point I just want to make is that I, we shut the power off to the original dwelling, and removed the cooking appliances from the original dwelling, so that I felt satisfied that this is a single-family, which is a lot by right.
Okay.
And that was a condition with the Board of Health as well. We have already been to the Board of Health, and, and they've approved a new septic system for the property, and we reached an agreement with them that they would lift the deed restriction to allow us to refinance the property again, to be able to remediate it and put in the larger septic system. It's an economic problem at, at its base, and I, I understand that economic hardship isn't grounds for a special permit. That having been said, I mean, I think there are adequate grounds for the board to approve the multifamily dwelling, primarily, primarily of which is, it's in, it's in keeping with the overall character of the neighborhood. Addressing the issue that the abutting property had, owner had above their view, my clients did approach them and explain to them what they wanted to do, and showed them the plans, and they suggested that he plant arborvitaries along the front edge of the property, and as those are shown on this plan, to try and provide her with some sort of natural shield to the building, because she did express to them her, her desire that they take steps to try and improve their view. So, they are, they are sensitive to the neighborhood, they've lived in the neighborhood for a long period of time, and I certainly think, certainly think they're open up to reasonable restrictions that the board might want to put on any special permit that they might issue.
Can I ask a different question? What, what might be the other ways to mitigate, or, or however you said that, to mitigate the? Okay, so one would be, if this could be a multifamily dwelling, is that the only way to mitigate such a thing?
Well, I mean, for them, it really is, because they have no use for a nine-bedroom home, I mean, that's, it's, and.
So, what about?
I understand it's a problem, it's partially of their own making, you know.
So, so the, the.
They'd be disingenuous to say otherwise.
So, I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is, it's not, it feels like I'm out on a limb. Is it, so presumably, the tax is based on what's there now, right? So, if it were just one dwelling, one smaller dwelling, would that mitigate? Or, that's what I'm trying to understand, like, what are, what are the options for mitigating, according to whatever the legal consults?
Well, mitigate, the concept of mitigation means reducing their economic damages. And if they're able to convert that sick building, for lack of a better term.
That's one option, is that the only option, is what I'm trying to ask?
I'm not sure what other option would be available to them, I mean.
Make it a, whatever that back building is, and that's it?
Hearing it down?
I'm just asking, I'm just asking, the, the sick building.
I mean, that's, that's an element of damages that would be tried.
It's just a question, it's just a question, I'm trying to understand the concept of mitigation.
Right, I don't, I don't represent the Simmons and their underlying litigation, and in light of the fact that this is a public hearing, I'm necessarily kind of reticent to address the merits of that litigation. That having been said, if this board denied the permit, and he were unable to use that property, that certainly would be something that would be taken into consideration in any settlement or trial of the merits on the underlying claim.
Okay, so, so if it were denied, it would be an effort to mitigate that was denied, and therefore, that was not an option for them?
Keep in mind, this is a third-party lawsuit, a reputation, these guys are saying he's obligated in some way. In my view, frankly, doesn't have a whole lot of bearing on the merits of this particular case, so.
But what I'm trying to understand, and I might misunderstand, is the request for the multifamily has everything to do with trying to mitigate these, these. I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand.
It's a financial issue.
And, and so, if that's the request for, if that's why they're requesting a multifamily, as opposed to, I would like to live in a nine-bedroom house, then I feel like we need, I feel like it is relevant.
Well, I don't think that, that is his intent, his intent is, and I, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's financially beneficial to you to have a multifamily home there.
It's, yeah, I'm paying full tax, I am paying full taxes on the footprint of those buildings right now.
Which, you did increase that footprint, and we can't find any, any documentation that we didn't follow the original plans, because according to John, we really can't find the plans that showed that it was going, what the living space entailed at the time, when it was approved, and also, it was supposed to be built in the same footprint. And you had an opportunity to come before the board prior to billing this. And now, you put yourself kind of in a very unfortunate circumstance, not entirely your fault because of the litigation you have going on, but we still, to me, we missed some steps here.
Yeah.
Okay? And, and not coming to the board and making sure all the approvals. You know, it reminds me of, you know, the old, do it anyway, beg for forgiveness.
No.
You know, but that's kind of how I feel.
Yes, sir.
Looking at all this, I mean, this is a tremendous amount of, I put a tremendous amount of time trying to absorb all this, and, you know, it just doesn't fit with what the original plan was. And I can't find any documentation from the building department, everything I have here, and looking even at what you brought to us today. And, you know, as unfortunate the circumstances are, I don't know, because you haven't provided us any, any documentation, that it's still uninhabitable, or when it became uninhabitable. Okay, I mean, you know, I'm a little bit in, I'm in the business, and I understand things happen, and, you know, you call in somebody, okay, they can, you know, purify it, and, you know. I just don't know, and I'd feel more comfortable saying, yeah, look, look, we did it in 'oh nine, they were here, 'oh ten, they were here, every six months, they were here, and they were trying to remedy the situation, but I, I.
Well, I, may I answer? Give you some input on that? One of the main reasons for the, for that was to get the chemical analysis testing, I've done it three times. I did it immediately after, I did it a year later in two thousand and ten, and I did it last year, okay, in two thousand and twelve, and hoping that things would drop, as far as the, you know, the, the formaldehyde that's off-gassing inside the home. So, when I did this, I, you know, this is ten thousand dollars at a time, every time I have a CPH there. So, as far as the plans are concerned, getting back to the board, the, the older building inspector, I submitted everything I was supposed to, okay? Unequivocally did that. I don't know where they went, I don't know why they're not here, but he had full plans, and said, two built it. And I did, because I wanted my family back here in Georgetown. That, I was. That, I was hell-bent on getting back here in Georgetown. My kids saw more of their friends in six months. In six months' time than I did. In that whole year, we were bouncing about like gypsies. It was awful, and it's still going on right this minute. And I, I just need some help, I need help to move forward, to make this work for everybody, everybody in this room, for this town, for my children, everything. I have done everything. I've gone to this board, not, not this board, but I went to this town, this town's official, and asked if I can build this instead of that, and I was told, "Yes." Now, is it, he said, she said, right now, "Yes," because that person's not here, okay? But I did give those plans, and I did go around and show everybody around my neighborhood. And I believe I even, Scott even saw the plans prior to me, prior to me building it, because I, I still had to go around and make sure everybody was happy. So, everybody got a good chance to see what was going to happen at my home. This was not, I was not trying to do anything in malice. I don't do those things, I don't, I'm, it's not in my blood. And, you know, I've changed lights for people, because they were shining in there at night, and, and I've done all sorts of little things to make sure that no one is affected, and outside of that. You know, so I work with people, and I work with people all the time. So, you know, the way to do is, I have to rip the roof off, get rid of the, get rid of the nasty formaldehyde foam, I have to take the gable walls out and replace those, I have to gut the whole second floor, leave it open for a month or two, let it air out with the new roof on it, and we'll do new air testing, and then we'll find out if I have to gut the first floor as well, which is very possible, we don't know. The CPH doesn't seem to think that, but I do, unequivoc, I know that we're doing the second floor, we're gutting the whole second floor, taking out every piece of insulation, old insulation, foam insulation. Gone, just gone.
How long does that process take, approximately, to remediate this thing?
Maybe you could answer that best, how long would a, what, couple, three mon, well, the roof, I would imagine a couple weeks, a week, a week for the roof. Yeah, you know.
I'm just saying, you're gonna talk about remediate, are we talking about a five-month project, or is this like a-
No, you're probably talking about a two-week project.
To remediate this thing.
To, to, to-
Tear out.
Demo, demo as described.
Yes, sir. Well, he's, he's saying with, putting a new roof back on.
And putting a new roof back on, I mean, just, you know, you're looking at a couple days, you know.
Right, but he's got a, but to re-renovate, whatever you gut, you gotta build back, you gotta do, you know, finish it all off. I don't know what's involved in it.
It's difficult, it's difficult to try and put a stamp on it as to how long it would take, because you really don't know the extent of what has to come down.
Until you pull it out.
Well-
Fixing it, is the contractor who did, who originally installed?
No, I, I'm getting no help from any of those people.
So, you're, you're paying for all of this yourself?
Yes, ma'am, I've paid for everything out of, on my own self.
So, and this kind of, and I'm not trying to pigeonhole you or anything, but isn't it more in, in, I mean, I'm kind of in the business too, it seems like it's a little bit more expensive to demo and rebuild than just to demo.
Uh-uh, it's an 1889 home, I, I have a lot of heart with that. And I'm trying to re, make sure that we keep the integrity of this, as, I'm proud that it's an 1889 New England home, you know?
I can respect that, I live in Old Hope myself. I have a question, I was reading the old minutes, and in the minutes, there's a note that, that you wanted to maybe condo it.
That was, I, I, at that time, I had no idea what we were, that was-
I'm, I'm just asking-
That was just thrown out there.
Okay, so it was just off the cuff?
Off the cuff.
Can I get back to remediation for one second?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine, fine. You, you want to follow up with that one first?
No. Yes.
The question I add, the reason why I want to know what the remediation scope is, is it seems to me, it's a whole heck of a lot less expensive, would have been to remediate. Or, I should ask a question, why wasn't that done two years ago, just remediate the thing and move in?
Excellent question.
Because you spent a whole lot more than that, trying to move into something that's questionably legal at the time or whatever, we'll hash that out again.
Excellent question. The question, the answer to that question was, I had no idea at the time that all that was going on, to know if I actually had to raise that house. And now I have the backing, backing from my chemical anal, my CPH, the chemical analysis, air analysis people, they've given me guidance, but it took me 30 grand to do that. I didn't know, you know, I'm, I'm new at this, I've never had a house that got poisoned before. So, now I have a little more experience with all of these people. I personally cannot live back in that front house. I have a doctor that, I, I, I got asthma from this, is what ended up happening. The guy let me lay there for two days while he blew that stuff in, and let me breathe it for two days, and then let me live there for another week. Thank God, my children are okay, I'm the only one that got hurt. But, yes, that was a great, it's an excellent question, and, and the answer to the question was, I didn't know what I had to do. Today, I have better, I guess I have better knowledge and more tests that I've done that helped me make a decision, this is a big risk for me to do. I mean, I don't want a bigger payment, but I have to. I want that thing occupied, I want it right, it makes me sad to look at that thing empty every night. It's very sad to know that I've completely remodeled that home, just finished the kitchen, everything. Come, new, new air conditioning, everything, and it sits. I mean, this goes way beyond what, you know, if, you know, thinking of an 1889 home, I have personally redone each room.
But the op, the option to mitigate that was not, not an option at the time?
No, sir, I didn't know if I had-
Per who? Per the, your-
Per the CPH, I wasn't, he wasn't sure if I had to tear it down, he wasn't sure or not. You know, I didn't have those answers as I do today, and those answers now are a lot clearer. Before, everything was, it was too darn foggy to not do that. And again, I, I, as Martin said, I could have put a trailer on there, but it wouldn't have fit my family. You know, I would have had to have two trailers, you know, in order to fit my family. So, I, I made it small enough, yet large enough, to fit my family. And it's way beyond a in-law apartment, obviously, I think you guys can all agree on that. But, you know, I'm stuck in a hard, I've been stuck in a hard rock since that guy put the foam in my house. And that's all, I'm asking for some relief here, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for the town to help me, help the town, help myself, and get this moving forward, so we can do something. Because it's sad, if you walk, you guys want to walk through the house, take a look and see all the work I've done to that place. It's beautiful.
I, I struggle, because I drive down, I, I've driven down this street a few times since we, we've gotten this. I walk to that park with my kids.
Yeah.
I've never noticed other multifamilies, I, I respect that you say there's six other ones. I don't, I didn't notice them. I looked today for two doors, you know, for, for something that said, you know, something that screamed multifamily. Usually, you see the two doors or whatever. I feel like this house, both houses, I shouldn't say this house, together, it's enormous, and it just looks out of place in this neighborhood. I struggle with the fact that, and maybe you're right, I'm not saying you're making up stories, I struggle with the fact that there's no history of how this got built, the way it did. I, I'm not, I struggle with it.
I, I agree with you.
I'm not saying you're lying, I struggle with it. I struggle with the fact that now you want to make it a multifamily, so you, and I under, I'm not discounting anything that happened to you, it's awful that, what happened to you. But the fact that now you're trying to make it a multifamily, and, and I struggle with the parking, I don't know how you park, you know, tail to tail, up and down the street. That's, someone's got to drive out for another person to get in. I'm just struggling, I'm, I'm trying to tell you the truth, I'm struggling with this. I don't know if we make it a multifamily, what kind of precedence this sets to the town, saying, "Okay, go build what you want, we'll, we'll pass it." I just, I, I'm really having a hard time with this.
That won't happen with John here. That will never happen with him here.
I, I just, I just want you to understand, I, I've got some issues, and I, I need you to better, to make me feel better about this, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, addressing your issues, I mean, I, I don't think that the intended use of the property is out of character with that district in town. He's not trying to plop a, a multifamily house down in a single-family subdivision that was just built.
I, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna drive it again, because I'm, and I'm gonna look harder for six-
Sure.
Multifamilies, you know, and, and maybe, you know, you're driving, I'm not-
Sure.
Driving 90 down the street, but I, I'm also not driving 3 miles an hour down the street.
Right. And, and, you know, I'd also point out that there's a lot of commercial use in the, in the neighborhood as well.
At the very end, yeah.
At the very, very end.
Right, right, but it's not, it's not far from Tom's house, and in fact, he backs up-
Yeah.
He backs up to the old lumber building over here, not far.
Right, right.
Diagonally. So, I mean, I, I guess I have to come back to the standards that the board has to look at under your local bylaw, I mean, this discussion's been wide-ranging. We've tried to give you the background of what happened to the house. I don't, I think he makes a very strong case that, that the, that the board can make findings, findings under your bylaw that would support the issuance of this special permit. I don't think it's out of character with that district in the town. I don't think it's going to overburden that district in the town. He complies with zoning, current zoning on the property. And obviously, we'd be open to whatever reasonable restrictions the board would like to put on the use of the property. Addressing the parking issue, I mean, there's only going to be one family living in that other dwelling, the older house. So, I mean, you know, front-to-back parking like that isn't unusual, especially in a district like that.
I've lived that way, and it's very difficult.
Oh, sure, sure. And this, you know, we're showing three parking spaces, but only two are required. So, we're trying to accommodate and then some the requirements of the zoning bylaw. We're building a nine-bedroom leaching field, and we're only going to have eight proposed bedrooms.
I, man, I said, when, to the parking, I proposed putting parking to the right, which would make it look like a parking lot, and that's not what we want in our neighborhood. I talked about putting a, a circle driveway, and that was also just kind of, I would, when my neighbors, I listened to my neighbors, and they said back to me, "No, please don't put that there, I, I want to see arborvitae's." So, that is why we've come up with what we have there.
My fear is if it's a rental unit, they're gonna be on the street, they're not gonna be back-to-back. I mean, that's, that's where I used to rent, and that's what we used to do. And, and I'm not saying I was right doing that, but that's my fear.
Well, even so, even if that was done, there's 15 feet of parking in, right there. They're not going to be in the street like most of my neighbors are doing. I have more land than my neighbors have, ma'am.
Oh, no, I can see that, I can see that.
And so, I can accommodate many, many cars, more than I ever need to do. Again, I was going to do a, a circular driveway where the, if you drove by, you saw the pine tree out front. I was gonna do a circular there, and that was discussed, and we, we both agreed that, okay, the grass would be better. So, there is a rock driveway barge to the right of that property that we park on as well, you know? Trying to make everything bright, and, you know, I'm, I'm trying to do the things that make people happy, and that's, you know, so those things have been discussed with my neighbors, not just you people. And so, that's why the parking is where it's at, you know?
Yeah, my feeling is that somehow, you managed to build this building, I don't know how, and if it had gone in front of the ZBA, if I had been able to look at drawings the way it should have been done, I would have suggested you be more, much more discreet about the second building you built. That's the issue that I have, because if you look at all the other double, multifamily homes on that street, they're much more subdued, they're, they're more discreet, they're blended in. Yours, yours is the, you have the biggest building on that street. So, that is why you're supposed to come to the ZBA before you build. If you want a multifamily, you come to us with a plan, and I realize that somehow, you managed to do it without submitting a plan to the ZBA before you even built. So, that's my problem with this. However this happened, quite frankly, I don't believe that this is all exactly how it went down. I honestly do not believe it. I believe that something happened here with the other building inspector, not a, not a wink or anything, maybe he dropped the ball, but that would be very strange if he wouldn't say, because I understand, I was at the last hearing we had, or it was a few years ago, and you, you were very clear in, in your intention that you wanted a multifamily building, you wanted a multifamily situation there, and that was, you were already living in the building you're in.
No.
No, that's not true, that's not true. I did not-
John can speak to that.
Right, but at that time, you did, you, you came to us three years ago wanting a multifamily, not just to move into that current residence, but you, your ultimate desire was to have a multifamily.
My ultimate desire was to have a garage, okay?
Right.
My ultimate desire was to have a home that I could live in, that I didn't have to bounce around in. That was my ultimate desire, sir. My ultimate desire now is, I want to be able to occupy the front y, and, front end of the home, and-
So, why did you temporarily set up a, a temporary residence in that, is that, can you do that, John? I mean, can you set up a temporary residence in the garage, and then when the house is done, move back into the? Because somehow, it went from, "I want a garage," to, "I want a multifamily." That's, that's my only-
I'm not sure you could occupy the garage as a dwelling.
Well, effectively did, because he built a kitchen and then didn't have permission for two, so we gave him one by, by making him have a deed restriction on the front. That's exactly what happened. You built, you built a residence that you could move back into, but in doing so, you created two dwellings that you weren't allowed to have, and so the town made you-
That was an agreement with the Board of Health to allow them to-
And the building inspector at the time.
Right, I mean, I think John was part of those meetings, but my-
No, I'm just, it's not, it's not inconsistent with what you said.
My recollection is that idea came from Chris Rich to allow them to, to-
But to me, that, that sounds like an accommodation that the town was trying to do to make-
That was a Board of Health decision, because you didn't have the septic for you.
Your family life better, so you could, you could live in a home. I don't think that accommodation was made to then go and have a multifamily, and that's what I struggle with. The multifamily part is what I'm really having a hard time with.
I, I direct the board's attention to the email that I wrote to Mr. Caldwell, it's attached as Exhibit D, in which I said to Mr. Caldwell, and that was prior to him issuing his letter, that my client was unsure what they were going to do with the property at that time, right? And that they were willing to withdraw their special permit application until such time as whether or not the front building could be remediated was resolved. And, and, and that was, that was, and I was part of that, so I'm sure that's what happened. And that was the grounds for the withdrawal of the prior application before the board.
Because they want to know what the end result of the previous, the original dwelling was going to be.
Correct, correct.
So that you could move back into it, is what my understanding was.
Well, exactly.
No, no, that was-
Now you can't, no.
This was done in the context of a special permit that was already before the board.
Okay.
That's correct.
That was withdrawn, because it was unclear at that point whether the front building had to be raised or not.
I see.
And so, now we know that the front building doesn't have to be raised and can be remediated, so we're back before you asking for-
A multifamily.
Assistance in the form of a special permit to allow the use of that, the best and highest use of that building, which we would submit to you as in keeping with the in-town district in which it's located. That's in, that's in summary where, why we're here.
A troubled history, for sure, that's where you started, and that's what-
I mean, it's a tangled, it's a tangled web, I grant you that.
John, quick question. If this were being proposed today- John, quick question. If this were being proposed today, would it meet all the requirements as far as setbacks go? Is it a, uh, non-conforming residence in any way at all, the original building?
The original structure is non-conforming.
Is non-conforming, so
But the addition is wholly conforming.
Okay.
Setback-wise. And, and I just said addition, and I just wanna make sure that, uh, so when, when the letter that Attorney Oxmal was referring to, where the private building inspector said that, you know, we could occupy this space, it was not this dwelling, it was this addition.
It's, that's in here. It does say the addition.
And then the occupancy was removed from the original.
Yeah, that was me.
Yep.
For, you know, okay, wait, you, you, in order for me to sign off on a final, I cannot sign off on a final that's creating a second dwelling. I wanted a discussion with, with Tom, you know, how can we, you know, get you into this, make you whole, but I still have to do my job.
Right.
And that's where we came up with the deed restriction and, and the, and removing of the cooking.
And on the, on the plan, I'll just point out, it does show the building setback in the front, and it really is de minimis. It's just this very front of the building, approximately four feet is, is over the setback.
Could be four feet, could be four inches.
Sure, I understand. It is a prior, it is, the building does, was pre-existing prior
Was pre-existing, legally pre-existing non-conforming, John, is that right?
Correct.
So, I mean, under, under our current, uh, I mean, to be fair, under our current, uh, review process, he would've made that finding that the addition is wholly within there, and he would've not
He could have, yes.
He could have, which he didn't, cause he wasn't, but, yeah.
Is this board any, any, uh, anywhere near a vote at this point? Uh, we do need to move forward. Um, I, I wouldn't mind, uh, continuing this, just so we can review this a little more carefully and, and really look at the conditions. If, you know, if there's some conditions we'd like to apply this, if we accept it, and just
I got a couple more questions before we do that.
You just told me that we gotta start getting
No, 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 I have, I want to move on to something a little more relevant to the actual use that you're requesting as opposed to how this thing got built, which
Right. It's there. You're right, it's there.
Uh, I, I wanna talk about your intent. So, you're, you're living in the back house, the back apartment now, whatever you're dwelling, the rear dwelling.
Yes.
And so what's, what's the intent now, moving forward? You wanna do what specifically?
I wanna occupy the rear and rent the front.
Stay where you are and you wanna rent the front.
Yes.
So you intend to own or occupy this?
Excuse me?
You intend to own or occupy
I do.
The unit.
So you're thinking conditions?
Well, I just wanna understand what, I mean, if there's a detriment to the neighborhood, which there could very likely be, or, or perhaps the board finds that, that the, you know, everything's been met, there's a big difference between an owner occupied two-family and a non-owner occupied two-family. That's number one.
So, I think that's why, I, that's why I was asking, because
Sure.
is that something you're fine with always being there, living there, as an owner occupied?
May not be his choice. I would submit that it would not be.
I, I don't know what to say about, you know, I can't give you a bleak, true answer on that one as far as I'm gonna be here.
Clearly, you would rather not have that condition on there, but that's something
I'd rather have, not to have a condition like that on it, you know, cause when it comes time, ten years from now, I, I might wanna be up in Maine, who knows? Why I'd go to Maine, I don't know either, but, you know, I'm just saying.
But it would be a condition that would stay with the house.
So it could be, yeah.
So if you were to sell it
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
New person.
You can condition it any way you want. You can, a special permit can be conditioned by ownership, it can be conditioned by length of use, it can be issued by lots of different things. So, I mean, I'm just trying to understand what you're intending to do, so that we get comfortable, if the board gets comfortable with what you're wanting to do, then my, my suggestion would be you craft a decision that
Eleven and thirteen, so for the foreseeable future, I think they intend to stay in the community, which they could do.
We're not moving from Georgetown. We don't want to move from Georgetown, let's put it that way.
And assuming that the front house can be, um, what do you call it, rebuilt as it was safely, how, how many bedrooms is that?
Uh, three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms, three bedrooms.
Yes.
Okay.
And it will be the same footprint?
Yep. So assuming you can still have two levels as you did, like with all the
Yeah, it's, it's, that house has already, believe it or not, the whole second floor has already been re-sheet rocked and new insulation, but I'm gonna rip it all out. Get, cause what it's doing is it's absorbing that stuff. And what I wanna make sure of is my future tenants, my son, my daughter, if they choose to live out there, I mean, they could live there too. I don't know what I'm gonna do with it at this time. I just need to be able to move forward. And when I remediate, that is, that whole second floor ceiling, insulation, got it, rewired, you know, to spec, all that.
How many, I'm sorry, how many bedrooms in the rear, the one that you're in now?
Five, three, four, five.
Five bedrooms?
Lot of kids.
Oh, yes, you have three, three kids.
Three.
And we have a stepson too, that stays from
Okay, got it.
Yes, I have. We have a son as well.
All right, I've asked my questions, but I've, I've got
Any more? I totally interrupted you.
No, no, no.
That was all of them?
Well, are these questions, things that they, are there any questions that the board has that they, you'd like the applicant to address if we continue this? So we can be a little more efficient next time?
Um, the first, the first time that you had the plans for the back, do, do you have, did you give the town the only plans, copy the plans that you had? Do you have a copy, is my question, of the original plan?
I'm not sure at this time. I could dig. I mean, again
I think that would be helpful, maybe.
I think you
John has it now.
John, don't you already have?
Yeah, when they
I have both the original and then the ones that you gave me on July sixth.
The which?
Oh, we have it, yeah, okay, okay.
We have.
I'm sorry.
Maybe you're comfortable with
I have the original, more questions for John and stuff like that?
And the revised plans.
Oh, okay.
What are the July plans dated, John? I'm curious. The date stamp on them?
Some restrictions or conditions, which might be similar to accessory parking with That's after we find out. Owner occupied, as discussed earlier. We should make that clear to him now and give him the opportunity to say, no, that's not even a consideration on the table.
You guys have any conditions in mind that we might apply to this if we grant it?
I think it has to be owner occupied.
I wouldn't do, we, only four spaces are expired. I wouldn't do six.
Uh, yeah, given the
I mean, I, I mean, I don't feel ready to make decisions, but like that's what, I mean, I would try and minimize if we were to do that, what, what could, could happen there, I guess.
Oh, in the future, with, with different owners or just in general use?
In general use, like if, like, don't, I think six is excessive for that street. If four is required, then I wouldn't do six.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if that, that parking situation there is the least, as you mentioned, the least detrimental, where they're lined up one in front of another as opposed to having them butt.
And, and you gotta think of I just feel like there's gonna be cars.
Yep.
Kids are gonna drive soon.
I have plenty of parking. I know that. And you'll see that when you drive by.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I did.
You did. This is
And actually, even in the picture, they're not lined up this way.
No.
Would it be helpful to the board if he submitted those testing results that he has for the building? Would that be helpful to you?
Uh, what do they show?
They show that the
Where are, does it show?
It's pretty technical, but it's, uh, pretty much shows, um, that the levels of formaldehyde are in the five hundreds, not, not into the five hundred parts per million as a pie, as, as opposed to opening up a new thing of insulation and getting a, a whiff of formaldehyde, uh, where it would be in the millimeters, uh, per se, you know, I'm not sure the real jargon, but, you know, instead of a me, uh, five hundred meters, it's in the millimeters. You know what I'm saying, as far as the, uh
Can I ask a question, and maybe I'm out of line, but if there's a, if there is a claim for, for, for that kind of damage, or for the formaldehyde and whatever, and the insulation isn't, is it claimed to an insurance company? Is it not an insurance lawyer? It must've been a claim made to your homeowner's policy, your homeless for, for remediation for the cost of that. Has that been submitted and then denied, or what's for, for, where does that at?
It should be addressed, ask him a question, please.
I apologize. I just, I just, I didn't mean to be out of order. But I just, I was thinking that when we're talking about the remediation, about the formaldehyde, and talking about what's gonna be done and what, or could, couldn't be done, when we talk about the cost of things and applying for things, I would assume that a claim, what must've been made to an insurance company, whether it be the homeless policy or whoever installed the, the insulation, to see what kind of, you know, whether they're not gonna pay a claim, and maybe that has some issue, that has some money involved, and whether or not there could be remediation of that, that particular portion. When we're talking about the formaldehyde and the, and the readings and things, that's the only thing I was, I was questioning, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, my understanding of the current litigation that's pending in the Essex County Superior Court in Lawrence is that the homeowner's insurance company, Tom's own insurance company, the installer's insurance company, and the manufacturer's insurance company, as well as the installer and the manufacturer are all defendants to that cause of action. So, he made a claim to his homeowner's company, they wouldn't pay.
I've tried everything.
They didn't provide him with any substitute housing coverage. They had to pay out of costs while they were moving from place to place to place. I mean, it's a, and I understand that financial hardship is in grounds for the, the board to grant relief here, but, you know, that's all well documented in the underlying litigation.
Um, I'd like to look at different options for parking. I, I, even in your, in your pictures, you're not parking front to back. And I don't know what the neighbors think, but I think, I mean, maybe this is more your purview, but if you came in around and did a circular driveway like this around this planted area, I think that would be more aesthetic for me.
I, I, I offered that, ma'am.
And they didn't?
I was told no.
By whom? Your neighbors?
By Betsy Amso.
Who's here objecting?
I was just gonna say it's Betsy. Betsy's here.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Um, can I ask her directly? Am I allowed?
She did.
May I ask you?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Uh, when Thomas came over, he showed me a pencil drawing and said that maybe they put in the circular driveway, and maybe they would put the parking to the left of the house instead, and of course, as you can see by the photos that I submitted, it's an awful lot of parking on the property right now. And, um, and the lawn has been disappearing, and people can do what they want on their own property, of course, but it's becoming quite unsightly. The thought of even more parking added to the front of the property was very distressing to me, so I didn't really care for either. And the circular driveway, that's just, there'd be a, there would be, um, a driveway here, and then a driveway going like this, and then a, a very broad driveway here, and then cars parked across the front of the property. It's just a lot of parking, so I really wasn't happy with any of the things that were parked.
Um, what I was, the reason why I'm asking this question is because I don't think people are gonna park front to back. I think people are gonna park along the street or in a parking lot fashion, so that's actually the reason why I'm asking this. If he were to put a circular driveway in and come in from where, where's that picture? I keep losing that photography one. And I, I'm just throwing things out here. I'm not gonna design your home for you, but if he were to come in here and go around this planting, cause this planting would almost hide the parking, and you could utilize
This is a much smaller space than you realize.
Oh, is it? Okay, all right. I'm just, I worry about the parking, too.
Yeah.
I can, I can see three directions that we can go in right now. One of them was, it was a potential motion with conditions drawn up, uh, to see if he would be receptive to that. Number two would be, continue, uh, make more, everybody has more time. Well, three, take a vote.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of other, I'm not, I'm not ready to vote, I guess.
I'm not ready to vote. I feel like there's some things that he can address.
I, I, yeah, I think you're right. I, to be honest with you, the building, the two buildings that are there, it's not uncommon to see that combination, and one of them's usually a barn. So the scale of it is, doesn't seem inappropriate to me, but the use seems a little inappropriate to me, in, in that, how many, there's just a lot of people going to be in these two buildings. And the other, other two, the multifamilies on the street seem to be much, they seem to have the ability to be more discreet about their parking. So that, that's why you can't tell that it's a multifamily. So, addressing the parking in a, in a serious way, so that no one can tell it's a multifamily, or it's just far more discreet, would be something that we would love to talk about more. I don't, I, I, I don't know whether that requires you to actually come up with some schemes, um, perhaps, uh, board members can stop by, we've done that in the past, and, and sort of discuss it. Create an environment that, that the members of the board are more comfortable with, and
I would invite the board to my house. I think that you guys should see the whole picture, because you'd find out
Yeah, well
Not lying.
No, no, I understand. We, yeah, I, so I, I think we are gonna continue, I, I think these, uh, conditions, I think we can apply afterwards. I don't think we need to go through that right now. I don't, I don't really, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a deal breaker.
This was just a motion that was
Sure.
put forward, so I didn't know if we wanted to share that tonight.
For me, um, you know, as far as the, the, the potential detriment to the neighborhood, I'd, I'd wanna see how that can possibly be minimized in any way. And, uh, I, I think own, uh, the owner occupying a unit, I think the owner would need to occupy the rear unit to minimize the number of rental bedrooms. I mean, if you flip-flop and all of a sudden you're renting five bedrooms to somebody, that wouldn't sit well with me.
What do you mean? Oh, move up front?
In other words, I, I'm just saying right now, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be comfortable with somebody, and it may not be you. You go sell the property, if this permit is, is not conditioned to the ownership, you're gonna go down the road, somebody down the road, whatever, ten years, who knows where you're gonna be. Sells it off, and all of a sudden, you know, a, a married couple moves in the front and rents out the back to a family of six, right? I mean, that's a big difference between that and a, and a, and a family owning that place and renting out, you know, three bedrooms in the front.
Nice foresight.
There's some, there's some, there's a lot that we need to consider in this. Parking becomes an issue. It's, it's, it's why owner occupied is, is a much different thing. If you're just renting the whole thing and you're living in Maine or wherever, or the next door on the wrist, you know, you're not there every day. The next thing you know, you get complaints. So, this is, this is some of the things we need to consider. And it, it sounds to me like at some point here, we may wanna continue, but, and you may wanna ask the audience if they have other things, but, before you do, cause Betsy had stepped up. And you knew very eloquently expressed some concerns that, that you had, and, and obviously, you're one of the director of orders that has concerns. Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I, and you know, if, if this is continued, you may not wanna come back next month, but while you have the opportunity, you may wanna think about, what, what did, what would you suggest are some concerns that could be remediated in any way? The, the building is there, and this is not the first time this board has, you know, in hindsight, come back and say, well, now what? We can't make something, can't tear it down, or all we can do is try to make them comply, or, in, in one way or another. So, you know, these are difficult, because we're faced with a situation that is not easy, and it's, it's not great, and if the world was perfect, we wouldn't be in the situation we are now. But here we are. So the mar, the, the, the structure in the rear is built. It is bigger than what you ever expected, and I'm just curious, is there something that, and you don't have to answer me now, you might want to come back later and probably be given an opportunity to speak, but you, you express a lot of concern, and I feel for you on that. And I would suggest that if you have any suggestions on how any of that might be able to be mitigated by this board, we'd love to hear it.
I'll have to come back with some ideas.
I think some sort of
Anybody else's for that.
Yeah.
Plantings, you know, trees are, um, what, what are they called, those bushes that
Screening.
Screening.
We, we do have some proposed varieties in plan already, which was in response to Ms. Amso's, she had suggested.
Uh, they're, they were designed not to go over ten feet.
Any other comments from the audience, cause we're gonna continue this hearing, so if you wanna say something now, then you don't have to come back next month.
Um, just to look into the other multifamily, the house that, the condo I purchased, sorry.
I'm sorry.
The condo that I purchased, before I purchased it, was a non-owner rental. It just, and the house next to me is rental. The house, house condo. We have parking issues. I have a driveway, the house next to me shares a driveway. You know, they park in the street a lot. In the winter time, nobody can park in the street. We just accommodate each other, as best we can. And I think there's probably a solution to the parking issue.
Great. Okay. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing. Until next month, um, what's the date?
What's the date, Patty?
June 4th.
June 4th.
And it will be after the first hearing at 7:00, which is Thurlows.
2nd? Somebody?
2nd.
All those in favor?
I...
Thank you for your...
Thank you. Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute break quickly to get ready to see the next group.
And we're on. We are now opening the hearing for Noonan Florist owned by Stephen Flynn. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48, the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. The board members here tonight are Dave Kapnis, myself, the chairman Paul Schillen, Jeff Moore, Gina Tebow, and Sharon Freeman. And somebody is going to read the legal notice for me. Thank you.
An application has been made by Stephen Flynn Senior of 177 Millville Road, Haverhill, Mass., owner and applicant of 269 Central Street Noonan's Florist and Greenhouse in Georgetown, Mass., assessors map nine, lot one, in the RB District for a special permit to operate an outdoor amusement mini golf use under MGL 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapters 165, Sections 2, 9, 78, and 79. A hearing will be held at the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor, meeting room. You've got Tuesday, April 9th on here, but it should be Tuesday.
Well, yeah, it's been continued, so May 7th.
Okay, April 9th, 2013, at 7:30 PM, and continued to May 7th, 2013.
Go ahead, guys, you've done, been doing a little bit of homework for us. I appreciate that.
So the, one of the first things we wanted to, concerns that we kind of overlooked, but it wasn't like, we weren't planning on doing anything once the greenhouses came down, but it's basically buffer, instead of seeing all new parking area, once these older greenhouses come down, is to buffer it with some trees and shrubs, quans and cherries in the Little Princess Bay Area, which on the opposite driveway, it kind of would mirror that, we already have some quans and cherries planted in there, so we kind of soften this whole scene by just not seeing all parking.
And it looks like you've also addressed the entry for us?
The, on the entrance, we originally, and still do right now, have parking leaning towards the street, so when it's busy, it literally has cars, and it's somewhat confusing when people come in, so our immediate reaction was taking both sides out, would give you six, seventeen more feet on either side, and add an enter and exit sign on both and on the island.
Yeah.
To try to make it less confusing, people go in and out. Once we get further down, one of the things we're kind of thinking of is having a single line, so people can go this way, people can go this way, or having a go-out button. That's what we kind of think overall, the overall plan would be eventually.
Well, what we're gonna try to do is get all the information out that you're giving us with a few questions.
Yeah.
Then if there's anyone in the audience that wants to have any questions or comments, then they'll do that, then we'll go back to the, really, the board giving their input on this whole thing. So any questions the board has to help him get all his new information out is what we're shooting for right now. So go ahead, Sharon.
I'm, I guess, it seems like you'd be eliminating a lot of parking spaces here. I'm just wondering if I could.
There's, yeah.
Thought about continuing at least some of them, so you don't lose all of those spaces, but we can hold that till later? It seems like you're giving up, you've accommodated our requests.
We're gaining a lot, though.
You are, okay.
We're gaining to the left.
Oh, because you're there.
Where we're taking down all that.
Okay.
We're gaining probably, how many are we gaining?
I mean, I appreciate the accommodation, but I wasn't sure.
Six fifty-five.
Yeah, we're gaining fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
And we're taking, we're roughly taking out twelve.
Okay, okay.
Six and then four, or six, eight and four.
Yep.
It's twelve we're kind of taking away.
Okay, so you'll be fine.
Yeah, and after talking to Pat Boylan, who's the Vice President of Harris Mini Golf, our parking is good right now with the ice cream shop.
Yeah.
Adding the mini golf, he says one and a half parking spots per hole for mini golf.
Okay.
Which doesn't really make any sense, but, so we, we went up to just two, so that'd be thirty-six, and then taking those twelve away, we'd still have.
You're still fine, okay, okay.
Yeah.
It just seems like a huge competition, which is appreciated, and wondered if it was too huge.
I think, yeah, I think the board can just ask a few general questions. I want to make sure, if anyone wants to, but this is a brand-new structure, I'm looking now at Exhibit B. This is a brand-new structure here, right? This is your, or, yes, that's the.
It's the brand-new structure.
The new structure, is, where's your greenhouse and stuff like that? I mean, not your greenhouse, your water feature, and just trying to get an idea of the location of all these things. In other words, I'm trying to get a lay of the land.
Yeah.
What I really want to get at is, what is the visual impact from the road? Now, you've screened the parking, that's great.
Yeah.
And I think there's some natural buffer above the mini golf already, I'm just trying to figure out.
There's birch trees and maple trees up there right now, that kind of, that kind of, I don't know if you can see.
You can kind of see it on here.
On the, on the overview section.
Yep, yep.
There's, the quans and cherries kind of go up to those.
Yep, yep.
Up to those maples and birches that are up there now.
Is your pergola still staying there?
Yeah, pergola's staying, yeah.
So that's not really changing much, so we're screening the new parking, and that matches the other side.
Yeah.
And then you've still got a natural buffer in that pergola and stuff, and I can see your water feature here, so, so the mini golf basically stays on that one level ground area?
Yeah.
Or it doesn't go up the hill or anything like that?
No.
This is crazy, by the way, we're very amused by this drawing. Obviously, somebody knows how to read this, but, and your intention is here to really make this different in that you're gonna naturalize it with your plant material, with your different.
Stuff that we sell.
Stuff that you sell.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you structure that? So I would, like, if I was going through this, is it, is it, I'm not sure where the pa, or I can see where the paths are, so it's everything in between the paths?
Yeah.
And is some of that grass and permanent trees, or is it all?
It's basically all, a lot of permanent trees.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do is plant kind of the stuff that we sell, and make it look like it's a, it's an own natural setting.
Yep.
With copper picks, basically explaining or telling you what each item is between annuals, perennials, trees.
Mm-hmm.
So they can get ideas for the yard, oh, I love, what is that? They can, they can take a look and see what it is, and then they could, in turn, get, grab an ice cream or a coffee and go to the nursery, outdoor garden center, and kind of find that and, and.
Yep.
Buy it if they wanted to.
Sure.
Exactly what I do at the Topsail Fair. Every year I go through that building and I look at the little tags. Swear to God. So are the features in here, like, for example, the Boulder waterfall, are those real rocks?
It's gonna be real rocks.
Okay.
We've kind of expressed the fact we wanted it to be real, natural, not, not.
Not those.
Not, yeah, we really wanted, and he, he basically told us, it's what, what you want, the premise is there, but it's, you pick up the stone, you, you do the landscape thing.
Okay. And then what about, is, I guess all the turf would be synthetic turf, and then everything else would be all natural?
Yeah.
Is it delineated on here, what you're, what you're gonna be planting, or how this is gonna be?
Um.
I mean, I see you have a planter.
It's not, it's not delineated on there, what we're planting. It's, that just shows the whole, that's, that main purpose was the lighting on that particular.
You have, I'm sorry. You have, you have lighting. I see you've got twenty-five, twenty-six foot light stations, and how, I'm trying to find them on here, how many, it doesn't really matter, I'm just wondering how many you have here.
Um, there's actually five. Yeah, so one's, it almost looks like a V with two eyeballs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And it's mostly bollards, right? These, that's what these are, these bollards? I think there's a lot of these, aren't there? Little short ones?
Yeah, the ground, the ground lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what's G? Are you extending the, is that a new greenhouse there? And I see G here, what's that?
Right now, that's just a, a mulched area.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the play area.
Yeah.
What has it become, anything? Just stays like that?
Just stays like that. We were trying, that's one of the things we were thinking about down the road, is maybe moving that playground more towards the ice cream, and just try to get those kids away from the parking lot.
That would make sense, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Any comments from the audience? Guys are just innocent bystanders right now? Good. Anything else? Anyone want to say anything? Okay. Well, yeah, I, I think I've, personally, I've asked the questions I want to ask. Anyone else want to ask some questions?
How did it go with planning?
Can I just make another comment?
Sure.
This applicant is here for the use special permit, will have to go for site plan review with the planning board, and in that, they're gonna be looking at, you know, lighting, parking, all of the typical site plan, stormwater management, where the, where the water goes, so, all of the real, whether or not it meets the requirements of the bylaw, stormwater management requirements within the state. This is, yeah, you're here to say, or, you know, yes, this fits, or it doesn't.
Right.
This is their first hurdle, they've got a lot of, a lot more review in store for this project beyond.
Sure. Is, is this, they have a, in place a special permit for what they're operating over there, correct? It's a greenhouse, and you need, in their district, they need a special permit for that?
The greenhouses, I think we traced them back to nineteen thirty-five or thirty-six.
Yeah.
It's been a growing operation at that location for a very long time.
So it's just an existing.
Way before zoning.
Way before zoning.
Yeah. But on top of that, that type of an operation is considered agricultural by the, by the state, and under forty-eight is exempt and allowed.
Yeah.
Agricultural, allowed in any district, including residential.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Another question, sir?
You guys been to planning yet?
Uh-huh.
Well, you did a good job for me.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I think I'm satisfied with everything.
I get a bunch. I'm shocked. Go ahead. No, I'm, I'm, I think this has the potential to be pretty cool. I think it also has the potential to go really wrong, to be quite honest, not necessarily you guys, but if I look at this again down the road, this is a special permit that if granted, and not very, very specific as to what is gonna be done here, without knowing exactly how this is gonna get laid out, what types of materials are gonna be used, what, how this is really gonna look and feel, this is one of the main corridors for Georgetown as you come in or out of the town. I know, I don't have to tell you guys that, you've been here forever, and this is a terrific facility you have over there, absolutely nothing personal about, about this whatsoever. When I first heard the concept, I thought, well, that, that could be, that could be kind of neat, but it looks to me like this is gonna be pretty expensive, which I'm sure it will be, if it doesn't work out, if it gets expensive to maintain, if it, the property gets bought and sold, somebody else has a different vision for this. This is mini golf, and mini golf could be something kind of pretty, pretty nicely done the way I think you're going down the road. It could be, you know, North Conway, New Hampshire, too, in Pirates of the Caribbean, if it, if we're not extremely careful with what we allow here. I'm, I'm not comfortable with the use at this point, because I'm, this is the first time I saw this drawing, well, we got this packet a couple days ago, but, you know, this, again, this is a residential neighborhood, I don't see all the neighbors out opposed to it, I'm surprised that no one's really kind of concerned. I think your intentions are very, you know, well-laid out, but this is something that Georgetown's gonna get stuck with, perhaps, for a very long time, and it, and it could, it could migrate into something very easily, in my opinion, that could be quite an eyesore to the town if we're not super careful, so, I don't know, that's just a comment I have. It, it's got the potential to be good, and it's got the potential to be, quite frankly, something that I, I would not want to live near or, or drive by every time I'm on my way, my way to town. It's not zoned for this, this is residential, so, you know, is this essential and desirable to the public convenience and welfare? I think it's, it, it's perhaps an idea that these guys have to enhance the viability of Noonan's down the road, and I think supporting Noonan's and making it a viable, ongoing concern for the future is important to Georgetown. No question about that, it's a great place. Twenty-six foot tall light poles lit till ten o'clock at night, that's a lot of, I don't know, I'm not a light guy, it's a lot of lumens that's gonna be seen from a long ways And, and the, so the integrity of the character, you know, maintaining the integrity and character of the neighborhood, I got a real concern with it. So, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, so, I, I guess I don't have any specific questions, but I certainly have some concerns with this.
As far as the lumens being thrown out there, I think there, there is data as far as how far out they go, and they're all pointing down, my son's probably more, I think it's on the chart there.
Right. I mean, this is a planning board thing as well, we're not gonna get into, yeah. I don't mean to interrupt you, but, you know, I'm not, this board is not in a position to really talk about, you know, how this should be situated and lighted, and that's, again, that's, as John said, that's something that the planning board would have to get into, but, once granted, if we'd say they can light it, they're gonna be able to light it, and so what's that mean for, for the surrounding neighborhood and, and everybody that's, that's going by this thing every, every night? So, anyway, I'm, that's where I am on this. I was certainly very much on the fence about the use, about adding that amenity to Georgetown, and I, I personally have come to the conclusion that it, I was making it out to be, your first impression, as he said, is, we, we all know what mini golf is, we know, we've seen them, and they're right on the road, and they're meant to attract people and whatever, and, and I think, I feel much better about it, because I'm believing that this is, this is a small portion of a much bigger business.
Yeah.
It's not going to be driving your whole business, it's just, you have this other little thing going on with a restaurant and a mini golf, and I think, I think the scale of it is appropriate, in that it, it's down low, it's not that big, and even if it's lit, the, the screening was really important to me, both for the parking and for the whole thing. I, I like to be, I wouldn't mind being able to peek through and see that there's something down there. So from a, from that perspective, I don't really see it as being detrimental to the neighborhood. I, I did for a while, but I think the way you guys are going to approach this, you're, you're in it for the long haul, and I think you're really going to, you know, one of the biggest fears of, of mini golf is they go out of business.
Yeah.
And I don't think you're gonna allow that to happen. I think that, once you've decided to do this, you're gonna do it right, and you're going to realize, if it's going well, great, keep doing what you're doing, if it, if it's not attracting the kind of people you want, then you're gonna change it, and you're gonna evolve it, and make it a, a part of your overall business, and that's really important to me. It's not this side, like, stepchild off here that you're just gonna experiment with, I think if you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it right, and that's, that's where, that's where I've led to over the past, you know, week or so. It's been really hard, because we all want Georgetown to stay the small residential old-town type thing, and which direction is it going, but I, I think, I, I feel that I can trust you guys to do it in a, in a nice way, so that it is an amenity, so that it is considered a, a good thing, so.
I think by utilizing this as part of their floor plan to increase the sales on the product that they're selling.
Yeah.
I think it's a super idea, because everybody knows what we do see in there, because I think everybody here shops there. I know we do, we haven't been for years since we moved here. And I do think that's an important part of the footprint, that also will help not just generating the revenue from the mini golf to help supplement the soft months, but also highlighting more of your, your product to people that might not have otherwise seen it. I'm trying to figure out a way to have my little scorecard, have a little spot on the side where I can write down, I want A-32 on hole seventeen, you know what I mean?
Something on the back.
Yeah, that was, that was actually the plan, on the, on the back of the scorecard, yeah.
Marketing, man.
Well, and it's, I think it's, I'll be, I'll be quick, it, it shows your, it shows your passion for plants. Like, to me, when it first came to me, I thought, oh, the plants are going to the back, I knew you were gonna, you know, have plants in around here, but I'm beginning to believe that that is, your passion is, is really the plants, and this is another way to get people to pay attention.
Yeah.
To the planting, so.
As far as longevity and where it would pass, you know, to separate hands that you're concerned, there's a grandson back there, and a younger son that, that, you know, coming up, so we're talking, you know, another twenty or forty years anyway, so.
Can we have him sign on the dotted line?
Don't take my comments personally.
No, no, but I'm just telling you, it's not, we're not, we're not in it to get in and out, this is.
It's always, it's always interesting when there's one board member that isn't jumping on the boat, and it's been me before, and it's, it's a hard place to be, so, if we condition it in a way that alleviates them from ever putting the pink dinosaur, I know you don't, but.
You know, you gotta have a plan.
I made it pink. I think pink would be more offensive. To make you feel better about it.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna get too comfortable with mini golf on, on the main corridor coming into Georgetown.
Okay.
I would caution the board, I know everybody's, and it's fine, I mean, it's fine, we have a difference of opinion all the time, and it's, and I completely respect what these guys want to do, and I completely respect everybody else's opinion on the board. I would just caution the board that, you know, you have to think beyond these applicants and this exact proposal, because unless it's very definitive, and you say per plan attached, any changes have to come back to the board for, for review and approval, whether that be hours of operation, whether it be lighting changes, whether it be the scope of the materials used in this thing to keep it to scale, as Paul says, all these things that we're talking about, that make this palatable and, and maybe pretty cool and a good thing for the town.
Mm-hmm.
They've, they've gotta be in a, in a package that you can say, ah, no, you said you were gonna do this.
Right.
And you know what? It's too expensive to fertilize all this stuff, and they went with false rocks, whatever it is, I'm, I'm making stuff up, but, you know, this is not an inexpensive thing to even maintain, I would think, you know, you guys obviously know what you're doing, maintaining plants, you do it all day long for a living, so this is probably nothing for you guys, but if it's not profitable, let's face it, I mean, you may or may not get the however many mini golf rounds in a day that you expect to cover whatever the, your needs are to keep it going, so what, what happens then? I don't know, I haven't seen a business plan, it's not our, that's for you guys to determine, but how do we do it less expensively? How do we market this better? How do we get more attention? How do we get more traffic in here to, to keep this thing going? As Paul said, you might bring it in and make it more of a part of your, of your ongoing establishment with, with the growing business, or you might say, we gotta do something else to make this profitable. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. These things, establishments in Georgetown have a tough time staying in business, frankly. I've seen restaurants turnover monthly, it seems like.
Yeah.
It's tough. Georgetown is not a high-traffic, it's a high-traffic area coming through, but it's, it's not a high turnover-type place for, you know, for, for businesses. I mean, you guys probably actually have a better handle on it than anybody in town, but, anyway, I don't need to go on and on, but I'm just saying, you gotta be, you gotta be careful, because anything can happen, and if it's, you know, if it's, it's the use of this mini golf, and, and it's extremely well-defined, and any, and you know, you know what you're gonna get, and everybody's happy with it, great, but if it changes to something else, or they, they need to change it to something else, you know, you, you gotta be able to have the ability to re-review it later on. to re-review it later on.
Well, is that attaching the condition that it's as, as per plan, and that plan is gonna be reviewed by the planning board, and then, but, does that come back to us then?
Well, whatever, whatever the elements are of this thing that make it not detrimental, that, we're talking about the use here, not, you know, like, you know, honestly, lighting, to me, that's kind of a big deal, I mean, you know, if you're living anywhere around there, you're gonna, you're gonna see this thing till ten o'clock at night.
Could we, in terms of the use, could, I don't know if you're allowed to do this, so it's considered a nursery farm, that sort of special accommodation, could you tie the mini golf use to that, so that it can only be in partnership, and it can't just be, become a step, like, if you transfer hands or something like that, do you know what I'm saying? Like, so, is, it's conditioned mini golf in concert with the use as a nursery or as a farm?
So Joe can't buy it and just make a mini golf?
Right, like, tie it to what's already there, and then it would have to continue, can you do that?
Yeah, it's a special permit, you can condition it as you feel appropriate, I think, uh, of course, it's a decision of the board, I think it's wholly appropriate that they condition the mini golf and not other outdoor amusements, could.
I mean, I mean, very specifically, condition the mini golf tied into the working of the nursery, I mean, to alleviate that, or to try to alleviate.
Yeah, again, special permit, you can condition it as you feel appropriate.
Are you writing conditions down right now, or, we are able to vote and attach conditions afterwards, aren't we, Patty?
Yeah, I'm, um.
I thought we could write up the, I thought we could, like, write the.
No, you can close the hearing and make a decision in ninety days.
I think we can write them right now.
Okay.
So, I like that you said it can only be mini golf and not any other outdoor amusement, alleviates.
Without coming back.
Yeah, without coming back.
Mention that possible little arcade area.
Well, and then I think we gotta condition the hours, and then if there's any change in any of what you proposed, you would have to come back, too.
We don't know exactly what they proposed yet because they haven't got a formal plan, or, I mean, do we have enough, do you think, think we have enough information?
I feel like we have enough.
All right.
I mean, we've.
They might need a little leeway, they're gonna.
They're gonna.
Right.
We just wanna review the plan after, the final plans.
Yeah, maybe, 'cause we had, um, before you go to planning, we may want you to just drop off your final, your final plan of your mini golf with the plantings that you're gonna do, just so we can say, yes, yes, this is what we are thinking of, and tweak it before maybe you go to planning, it doesn't have to necessarily be a meeting, I don't think, I think it could be something where you give it to Patty and we have two weeks to comment or something, no?
You can make those comments, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
You could put a condition in like that and make those comments to the planning board for their review, you know, and so that it becomes part of the review process.
Can we incorporate that back into our decision later on, though, is what, you can't really do that, do you have to?
It has to try it back in.
That's part of what you wrote down here, that we make our concerns noted to the planning board, okay.
I'm actually, I was actually in support of extending the hours, so I was, if you conditioned it on the hours in this version, I mean, I thought extending it was a good idea, so I don't know if others agreed with that, so.
Are you looking at the new ones?
I think so.
Those are the other hours.
Oh, sorry, I'm confused.
Do we, are you still thinking about the arcade and the inside?
Um, really haven't put much thought into that.
'Cause we have it right now as a condition, if you want it, you're gonna have to come back.
Indoor amusement, right, John? If they wanna put arcades in the, in the ice cream building, where, where were you thinking of?
Yeah, and the ice, well, kids are waiting for the ice cream.
And the use schedule?
Not sure.
You know, I gotta be honest, I don't want my kids playing arcades. They're out there to get ice cream, that's the fun part of it, I mean, if, you just want an opinion from a mom who's got a six and four-year-old, they get plenty of TV and. No, they actually like the ice. No, you know what I mean, like, I. I mean, if you decide later, I just, I just wanted to give my opinion.
Well, I guess that's a kind of, it's a kind of a use impact that would be interesting, like, what direction is it going in, is it?
I feel like arcade makes it a little bit cheesier, too, to be honest with you.
I think that's what Jeff is implying.
Don't look at me.
No, but that's what Jeff is implying, if you wanna.
Yep.
Because that's what Jeff is implying, is how does this evolve?
Right.
Even though these guys are wonderful, how does it evolve? And so, all I would like to do is see the final plans, so that if it doesn't go as planned, they need to come back to us, so we need final plans, and.
But they don't, they won't come back to us, we have to make our, we have to make our comments to the planning.
No, I said, but there will be a final plan, it will be approved, I guess we're not gonna approve it, but if they go beyond that scope, or if something changes, they have to come in front of us again, which we already have in there, correct?
No, we make our concerns with the planning board.
But I don't know that this is.
It's item number six.
It's RV, the ZBA concerns with the planning board.
Well, they've got a plan here that, other than the, the topics that the planning board is going to cover, which is.
No question.
Egresses and parking and lighting and all the other things.
So it's not gonna be any other information?
If you decide you want it.
If you see how it's not cheesy and how we've done it very classy, then.
I'm not saying.
No, 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 but what I'm saying is it might make it easier for you to make a decision, well, you know. So I don't want, I don't want that, I'd rather not leave it out right now.
Yep, and that's how we have it.
That's fine.
Indoor amusement's not allowed, though.
Okay, so it'd be a special permit for indoor amusement?
No.
No?
It's not allowed.
Oh, it's just not allowed.
Oh, there you go.
And a variance is even harder to get. So we can take out five.
Outdoor amusement is, that's weird.
I'm applying a special permit.
You can have your.
You can light up the whole neighborhood.
I don't write it.
I swear to God, I don't.
All right.
Yes, yes.
I'll be glad to identify myself, my name's Steve Keane, I live at Twelve Elm Street, and I'm trying to feel like a disinterested observer, but I'm having the biggest trouble cobbling a connection between a mini golf course and an agricultural use. I mean, what's agricultural about a golf course? Oh, they call golf courses agricultural, so they get subject to inspection of the land for all the fertilizer and other things that have been spread on them, but I don't see much connection between a amusement game and an agricultural pursuit.
I understand, I, it's been made a point that, under the rules, and I don't know if you know anything about this, but, that's considered a, what did your lawyer call it? It's a, uh.
Well, let me, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
That had to do with the ice cream stand, I think, is the.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they answer your question specifically, there really is.
No, it ain't there.
There isn't. This is, what they're petitioning for is a special permit for outdoor amusement, which, irrespective of the ongoing operation that's there now, they would be able to apply for.
But why wouldn't that be, in other words, you say there exists now a special permit for agricultural?
Actually, that's not, that's not correct.
Yeah, they're so old that they never even had a special permit, it's been there for so long, so they're not even, yeah, just, they're existing before the bylaws, which we just found out.
A non-conforming use?
No, the way, the way that the lawyer, the way that attorney, your attorney explained it, if I understood it correctly, was that it was considered sort of a farm operation between the nursery part.
As long as they sell so much percent.
Yeah, so, so it's not, it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with.
Agricultural exemption.
Yeah, regardless of whether it was pre-code or not, it had something to do with the agricultural exemption, and it was tied, and it was allowed to be, nursery does fall under that category, I couldn't tell you why, but.
Oh, and it's, and it's considered a marketing, this, this mini golf is considered a marketing.
Do you have any concerns with the, with the mini golf going in there, as far as the integrity of the neighborhood, you live nearby, I'm gonna put you on the spot, because I seem to be the only one that is worried about this, but.
Oh, really? I'll bet you there are more, but I don't think, I'm questioning, I have no understanding of how broad the notification has been to, you know, that's, that's sort of a wicked curve, I have friends that live just beyond heading south where it begins to curve, and I find that when I go down there and wanna turn left into their driveway, get all these cars, and say, oh my God, there's a rail there, and I've had one guy behind me go up over that, you know, granted, it's two hundred yards probably from where the entrance and exit for this building, but it's not a very good road.
We did talk about that.
You don't get Sharon going on the road. You're absolutely right.
We did talk about that, and I don't know, I was a strong advocate, and I don't know if the board totally agreed that that is an issue, but that is a town issue, and it's not their business issue for them to resolve.
And they don't make any input?
I can't speak for the.
I think it is possible that the planning, the planning board will actually need to address the lack of sidewalks and that whole intersection and everything, I, and in fact, in some towns, the, the ZBA can actually broach those situations, where if we see a vehicular problem. Well, I'm just saying, I think the planning board probably will want to address that, other people are concerned about it.
Oh, the planning board, I thought you said the zoning board.
They did, they did, that's part of the reason why they adjusted the entrance and exit was to, was to address the board's concern about the intersection of the roadway. But we have bumped that to the highway department, the addressing the sidewalk issue.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, um, what's interesting about this, I think the actual impact is not going to increase a whole lot, because as you said, what's gonna happen is, they're already very busy for a month and a half, right in spring, and then it gets quite slow, and that's the whole intention, is to get more customers in during the slower times, so I think it will have some impact on traffic during the busiest time, but, um, I think that it has much more to do with when it's slower, in July and August, that sort of thing, that's what they're trying to do. Anything else, sir?
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Do you wanna look at this?
Yes.
Steven, the P-H-K-E-N-E.
What, are these ZBA concerns, are they upon final design review, okay?
So, once they have a final design, we get a copy of it?
Any change that are made after site plan approval, owners must return to the ZBA. Jeff?
I'm the lawyer. Me?
Yeah, I know you, I know you're not gonna help with this, but.
No, no.
I think I accommodated your concerns.
You what?
Tried to accommodate him as much as I can.
Before we go to a vote, what might your feelings be on this? I think you've made it clear.
What concerns we talked about.
I agree with some of the concerns with this, we don't want this to turn into a hunk of something, you know what I mean, should things happen?
Yeah, yeah.
I do feel that these folks have put forth a tremendous effort to try and make it blend in as possible, and complement your business.
Six is the same as that.
Without doing the dinosaur approach.
Yep.
We can't predict the future. Now, if that happened to be not profitable, would they wanna say, well, we gotta make it crazy, or no, we gotta bring back more greenhouse, we can't decide.
Right.
I don't know that.
If they make any major site changes, I think one of our conditions is they come back to us, so. Sharon, your feelings?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to be looking forward and the future use, yeah.
We try to get a feeling of what the board is doing, um, it needs to be not unanimous, but it needs to be a majority, right? Four, you need four votes out of five?
Four out of five, John.
Um, so we try to get an idea of where everyone's going, and then that sometimes allows you to withdraw without prejudice if you want, or we go ahead and vote and.
I would be going forward, yeah. They can't.
They're just working out somebody, just, you can't.
I'm wondering if I can say that we wanna see their final design before it goes to planning, so that if we have concerns, we can address it, we can tell the planning board about it, is, can you, can, how do you?
But you can't, what you, what you have to be careful not to do is to make them come back after, so you're gonna give them the use.
Well, I said, if there's any changes that are made after site plan approval, they must return to ZBA, so that's after, they've already got approval.
They don't have a final plan yet, so, and you can't, you can't pass any of the ZBA responsibilities off to the planning board, so you can't say, you know, I've got some concerns now because I voted for this, and now I got a final plan, planning board, can you please address this? You can't do that.
No, I'm just, I'm, what I was thinking is if all of a sudden he said, we're gonna use plastic boulders, and I said, no, you told me you were gonna use real boulders.
Then you ought to put in your condition that you're not gonna use plastic boulders, and, or, or per plan attached that says you're gonna use real boulders, that's the problem I have, is this doesn't say all that in there, all the, all the niceties that we've talked about, this concept, which all sounds great.
But that's why I wanna see his design to make sure that.
Well, then have him come back and have a bunch of the design.
John's just, John's out.
And you're done.
No, I don't wanna do that.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not being.
John's looking.
I think that you can say that, um, that a condition would be that they submit a plan that you review so that you can comment to the planning board, so, at the same time when they, when they give the planning board the plans, that you get copied on the plan, which you do anyways.
Right.
That's different than saying you need to see it before we go to the planning board.
Right.
No, at the same time, I didn't mean any extra review.
We only wanna make comments on it, that's all.
I just wanna, because you're telling me, and I'm taking you, 'cause we don't have the plan, I'm taking your word, so I just wanna be able to trust you, and, you know, like, I try, I do trust you, but to protect your neighbors, I feel like I need that extra layer of you saying, yes, they are real boulders.
That will give this board the opportunity to say, well, we granted this special permit, feeling that this is what we're gonna get, and this is exactly what we're gonna get, or with the misunderstanding.
So how do you write that? That's what I'm struggling with, 'cause you don't like the word concern.
No, no, it's not the word concern, it's just that you can't leave an open-ended.
Plan should be submitted.
At time of site plan submission to the planning board, ZBA receive a copy of proposed plans.
Shall receive, yep. And forward comments.
When it's reviewed, comment to the planning board.
Yep.
Well done, John, well done.
Should be on the ZBA. Thankless job. You couldn't do that, could you, anyways?
A lot of towns actually have, they wouldn't, not a non-boarding number, but they have the fully inspectors there, uh, zoning enforcement officers there, or.
Don't you want to?
You guys do a great job.
Thank you. Whatever it is, I mean, or, I mean, or if you don't care, you don't care, it's fine.
I think, I.
Dictate what you want. They're not gonna be opposed to it, because that's what they're telling us they're gonna do. Ie, a banner, a banner, okay? And look what you write, and look what you get, okay?
Well, that's why I don't wanna.
Ten thousand times more potentially detrimental than that was, and everybody's drawing attention.
I'm comfortable with site plan review and comments to the planning board.
That, that is fine, you've written, I'm just saying, if you have other specific things that you wanna make sure is included in their plan.
I think this covers me.
That you dictated in there.
I do, it's sufficient for me as well. Sharon, sufficient for you?
Can I see it?
No.
The situation you never wanna get in is when you make a condition, and the planning board make a condition that they can't be reconciled.
Uh, yes, could you, if you have a comment, come and, come up to the podium and let us know who you are, and you must address all your comments to the board and not to the applicant.
I think this gives us the before, we can say, yes, we agree, and it assumes that planning.
Okay, Becky Singleton on Nine Elm Street, neighbors of Marty and Steve, and I shop at new nuns all the time, but.
Could you speak up, please?
I shop at new nuns all the time, but I've been. I show up at Noonan's all the time, but I've been watching this, waiting for it to come up on the TV, so I just wanted to come down and say that for the integrity of the town, I'm not really for the whole thing of mini golf. That's all I wanna say.
Right, thank you.
I just don't generally-
Duly noted.
Think it's a good idea for the town.
Yep, I know, that's, we appreciate that.
I mean, I love Noonan's. It's not that. It's not anything personal. I just, in general, to put in a mini golf, I'm just not for it. And especially at that location, I just think it's a really busy road and a main access into town, and so that's all I want to say.
Yeah, well, we, thank you. We, we realize that. Yep.
Did you pay her off?
Let's get it in. We got two minutes.
All right, want me to go? I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that the board vote to grant a special permit to Stephen L. Flynn, Sr. of 177 Millville Road, Haverhill, Mass. and Stephen L. Flynn, Jr., owners and applicants of 269 Central Street, Noonan's Florist and Greenhouses in Georgetown, Mass. Assessors Map 9, Lot 1, in the RB District, for a special permit to operate an outdoor amusement, mini golf only, under MGL 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter 165, Sections 2, 9, 78, and 79. I further move the board, finding the application met the Georgetown zoning bylaws, 165 to 79, A through D. A, the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience and welfare. B, the requested use will not overload any public water or other municipal system so as to unduly subject any areas to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. C, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. D, the requested use will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. The special permit is hereby granted with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall apply to the planning board for site plan approval. Two, hours of operation shall be mini golf, shall be the following: mini golf hours, 10:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday; 10:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. Friday through Sunday; open March until November, weather permitting. Cafe operating hours to be open year round as follows: 7:00 a.m. till 9:30 p.m. Monday through Thursday; 7:00 a.m. till 10:30 p.m. Friday through Sunday. Number two, if there is a change in hours, the owner must return-
Three.
Number three, if there's a change in hours, the owner must return to the ZBA. Four, if the property is sold or transferred, the new owner must come back before the ZBA. Five, at time of site plan submission, site plan approval submission, ZBA is to receive a copy to submit comments to the planning board. That was five, right? Six, if any changes are made after site plan approval, owners must return to ZBA.
Any further discussion on this? Oh, second on that motion?
Second.
Am I supposed to read the lapse of permit?
Yes, after the-
Is that part of the condition?
No.
No, that would be-
No, it's after the-
Sorry, I don't mean it.
14 days is right.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Uh, I'm confused on the, uh, return to ZBA.
Can you reread that last condition?
If any changes, if any changes are made after site plan, site plan approval, owners must return to ZBA for review. That was from your back.
In other words, if the, if the planning board changes things, we wanna see it again? No, not the planning board.
John's shaking his head. No?
That was at the end of yours that I-
Oh, after site plan approval.
So the planning board approves it, and then Noonan's decides to change the operation in some way.
They have to come back to us. Is that what she said?
I don't think that has anything to do with site plan approval. I think it has to do with what, what, what this board would approve.
All right, so should I just say, "If any changes are made"?
After site plan approval?
Forget about site plan approval. I, I, that's not-
If any changes are made, they must return. Changes in use?
Like car aids, like anything?
Well, I feel like if they change the hours, or if they-
No, they can't change the hours. The hours are in the special permit that you're dictating, so that can't be changed. If they, if they would like to change the hours, they would have to come back for a modification to the special permit.
I already said that, but I'm talking about, like, anything else.
John, John's-
No, it seems like you, I, the way I was, I think of that last condition would be like, if it's, outdoor amusement is now, mini golf is converting to something else, but you seem to address that in the beginning, saying, "Mini golf only."
Okay, so then I'll take that out. Can I just amend a friendly amendment, number six? Did I just confuse everybody?
So what is that, read, read six? Are you taking out completely?
There is no six.
Taking out six.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, okay, so I'm still-
So I just wanted to say, if there's any other changes-
He wants to get it right.
What?
If there's any other changes that we didn't mention already that they wanna make, they have to come back. But is that too general?
Well, they won't be able to make changes, because they'll have a site plan-
And it's got these conditions.
Yeah, but also the planning board is going to grant them, based on their plans, a permit, or not a permit, but they'll be able to build it as its plan.
Okay.
And if they change anything, they have to go back to planning, don't they? Yeah.
And we get to make comments in the meantime. Okay.
They won't forget about it.
Do you agree that they have to go for site plan review?
That was the first one.
There was one in here that you were reading, number three. Could you read number three, Patty, please?
If there are any changes in the hours, the owners must return to the ZBA.
Four.
I have one. The applicant shall apply to the planning board for site plan approval. Two, hours of operations for mini golf and then cafe.
Number four.
Three, if there are any change in hours, the owners, the owner must return to the ZBA. Four, if the property is sold or transferred, the new owner must come back before the ZBA. Five, at the time of site plan approval submission, wait a minute, of site plan approval submission, the ZBA review shall, maybe?
The ZBA receives-
ZBA.
Well, the shall review.
Site plan, we should, we need a-
Receive.
A copy of the site plan.
Receive a copy of the proposed plans to make comments to the planning board.
To submit comments to the planning board.
Submit.
Or make-
Take out approval, so, site plan submission.
Site plan submission.
Okay. Time of site plan submission, the ZBA shall receive a copy of, I'm mucking my way, the proposed plans to submit comments to the planning board.
No, no.
Sound right, Gina? I'll read it again.
Yeah, read it again.
At the time of site plan submission, the ZBA shall receive a copy of the proposed plans to submit comments to the planning board. And just so you know, that, that's good, but, so when they file site plan approval with planning, Howard gives me a plan distribution, he'll give me the application and a whole set of plans.
Okay.
So we're gonna get that, but it's, I mean, it's good to have it in there, so.
Okay.
We get that, and then he asks for comments before their hearing date. So if their hearing date, we don't meet before that, um, then you guys can come to Town Hall and take a look at them.
Is one question about the one about the transfer of ownership, does it need to be qualified to come back to us for the special permit for mini golf?
I think what you mean is this is conditioned on ownership.
Yes.
If, if the property is sold or transferred, this special permit shall lapse, and the new owner must come before the ZBA to apply for a new special permit.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. That's what I, that's what, that's what we're looking for. That's exactly it.
All right, if the, if the property is sold or transferred, this, this special permit will lapse.
I would say the special permit is conditioned on ownership, 'cause that's what you, if that's what you're, if that's what you guys mean. You know, you can't sell a thing to somebody who's a-
Permit shall-
Wants to take advantage of the mini golf, not the rest of it.
So are you amending that?
The special permit is conditioned upon ownership. If-
Special permit.
If the property is sold or transferred, the special permit shall lapse, and the new owner must come back before the ZBA for a new special permit.
Did you get that, Patty? Do you want me to repeat it?
The property is sold or transferred, special permit-
Shall lapse.
Is conditioned upon ownership?
No, shall lapse, and the new owner must come back before the ZBA. Right?
Okay, I read it as, if this, if the property is sold or transferred, this special permit, unless Jeff was just saying that to you and not saying it as a condition.
I don't know what he was saying.
The special permit is conditioned upon ownership. The special permit shall lapse.
He's our condition guy. No, you're good at it.
The special permit is conditioned on ownership, period. If the property is sold or transferred, the new owner must come back before the ZBA to apply for a new special permit. Same thing as you do for an accessory apartment. Look that one up and throw it in.
There you go.
Is that right?
So you're taking out, if the property is sold and transferred in the beginning of that line.
Probably should've read the sold.
Can you read it again?
Read it again, please.
The special permit is conditioned on ownership.
Period.
Period. If the property is sold or transferred, the new owner must come back before the ZBA to obtain-
Apply for-
To apply for a new special permit.
Or not.
Because, yeah, we told it there.
It's just late. Okay, want me to read that part?
Do you want me to change it?
Well, I-
All right, can I get a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, extend this meeting beyond 10 o'clock.
I'll make that motion to extend this meeting beyond 10 o'clock.
Second. All's in favor?
I, uh-
You do that every hour in the hour, though.
I think it's to sit till 10:30.
Okay.
Special conditions, not beyond 10:15.
Yeah. Are you?
So that's my only other comment on this, other than-
Do you want me to take out?
I think it's a little cleaner, um-
Take out number three, and make number two, hours of operation shall be limited to.
Okay. We're taking out three completely. You still, four is now three. That is four.
Say hi. Do you wanna, do you wanna read the conditions to make sure we're good now? Please.
Applicants apply to planning board for site plan approval. Two, hours of operation shall be limited to-
You don't have to read those.
The list that's on here. Three, now, special permit is conditioned upon ownership, period. If the property is sold or transferred, the new owner must come back before the ZBA for a new special permit. Four, at the time of site plan submission, the ZBA shall receive a copy of the proposed plans to submit comments to the planning board.
We're good.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
A second.
I'm gonna go one at a time. Oh, more discussion?
Well, you gotta ask for discussion.
Discussion?
I'm not saying there is any.
For the third time? But it's, it's good.
Super good.
Uh, Sharon Freeman?
Yes.
Gina TiVo? Jeff Moore?
I vote no.
Dave Kapnis?
Yes.
Paul Shillam, yes.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Someone like to make- Oh, where is that on here? Oh, wait, no, that's right, sorry. Notify, uh, there's a 20-day appeal period. Following 14 days, clerk has to file a written decision with a town clerk. A person who exercises rights under an appealed special permit variance does so at risk.
Lapse of permit.
Don't have that on here. Not on here.
What are you looking for?
So second page?
Thank you, sir. Lapse of permit, per Mass. General Law 48, nine, dash, nine, uh, special permits granted shall, shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeals referred to in Section 17, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for a good cause, or in case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause.
Sure.
So that just means, John, they have to begin, yeah, construction within-
Three years of their final approval.
And if-
Patty?
They get hung up, do they, do they file for an extension? They can file for an extension if they get hung up with another board. Yes.
Okay.
We need to add the exhibits in.
Yes.
Oh. I'm sorry.
No, 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 I have them, I already have them in here.
Okay.
But someone, you wanna-
But all of them, A through F, D, E.
You wanna just read the, do you?
A is the-
Aerial view?
Yep, aerial view.
Parking plants. B is the landscape plan.
Yep.
C is the entrance revised with parking removed dated 5/2/13.
Yep.
Exhibit D is the, I put pink tree. Sorry, I'm not a-
It's the cherry tree.
Cherry tree, dated 5/2/13. E is the, sorry again, white-
Little princess.
We can't. Dated 5/2/13.
F is the letter from Stephen L. Flynn, Jr., dated April 24th.
The Dow operation.
Yep.
And then G.
And G is the mini golf plan, yes. Well, and-
Four, three.
And the mini golf plan, too. I think you should, that it's also for the mini golf.
Okay, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second, motion to close.
No, I, I looked at him and I said-